Doing the conducting, so it's gonna be a really great afternoon for us and the viewers.
We love the L.A. Opera!
The average car weighs 6,000 pounds. The average bicycle with rider weighs 170 pounds, give or take a few. A typical car traveling 35 miles per hour has 220 times the momentum or energy of a bike rider traveling 10 miles per hour. And if the two collide... Bug splatter. Avoid being bug splatter. Ride right, stop at the light, watch the road. Hey buddy, don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And the working smoke detector can warn you of a fire! Like the one behind me! My hero!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work. How'd you know? The ball called.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. Today's program is from the Los Angeles Music Center, where the Los Angeles Opera has invited senior citizens to the final dress rehearsal of Verdi's opera Regolato. We will return to the stage of the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion in a moment. But first, today's visit to Caregiver's Corner.
Oftentimes, as caregivers, we put ourselves at the end of the list. We don't take care of ourselves as well as we should. And yet, it is important, like the example we're given when we go on an airplane, of putting the oxygen mask on first before you help others. It's a similar concept in family caregiving. You do have to take care of yourself before you start to help others. So one of the ways that we suggest you do that is by making a weekly plan for you. A very specific plan. A plan that will help you stay focused on making time for yourself. I know you're saying, "No, no, I don't have time for that. I'm already overwhelmed with everything else." The real issue is that you must make time for yourself. Make time. You start by doing something like determining what is something you want to do. Not something you should do or someone else thinks needs to be done, but something you want to do. It could be something as simple as being out in the garden for a little bit and gardening, or going to sit near the water fountain out in the park. Go golfing. Whatever it is that you like to do, you need to find something that you want to do. Then you need to make a specific plan about when you're going to do this. Are you going to do it Tuesday around 1 o'clock, after your care receiver has had lunch and is resting? Are you gonna do it on Saturday morning? Find a specific time that you're going to do this, and determine what you're going to do once you're there. Are you going to just sit and enjoy the water fountain? Are you gonna take a couple magazines with you and finally get to go through them? Figure this out and be very specific, so that eventually your plan for the week is, "On Tuesday, I'm going to go to the water fountain at the park. On Tuesday afternoon about 2 o'clock, I'm going to sit there for an hour and a half and read my magazines." Once you've made your plan, then look at it and think, "Okay, how confident am I that I'm going to be able to do this?" I'd say I'm at a confidence level of eight, because I think I can get somebody to come and stay with Mom while I go do this. Now, if your confidence level is less than a six, maybe you need to rethink it. Make it more bite-sized. So instead of planning on going both on Tuesday and Saturday, just decide which day is better and make it for one day, so that you really can achieve your goal. You'll find that if you make a weekly plan for you, and stick to it, and avoid canceling out on yourself, it will really make a difference in how you care for yourself, for your care receiver, and for the entire family. It will make a difference.
And now, let's return to the stage of the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion and join senior citizens from all over Los Angeles County enjoying the final dress rehearsal of Regolato by Giuseppe Verdi.
Now, performances like this for the seniors today wouldn't be possible without the help of volunteers like yourselves. Tell me, what got you involved with Los Angeles Opera?
When I retired from work and I had friends that were volunteers here with the Opera League, and they said, "Oh, you must come, you'll love it." And I can tell you, I have thoroughly enjoyed it. And I met some of the most wonderful people. Just a lot of fun. We do a lot of things for the Opera League here. We feed the cast. We work in the boutique shop. We have an education department. Bringing the seniors and the students here is absolutely wonderful. We visit and talk with them, make them feel welcome. Then after we all do all that, we even go to see the opera, which is great.
Oh, that's excellent. Now, I understand some of you actually go out to the senior centers and teach the seniors about the opera before performances like this.
Some of you, yeah. We're not involved in that aspect. There are some. There's so many departments and things, and if a different one's doing different things.
Now, Claire, how long have you been volunteering here?
Five years.
Five years. And you've loved every minute?
I love every minute of it. And I met the wonderful people, and, you know...
So you can recommend to seniors, or in fact, anybody that's got a few spare hours on their hands, to come along here to opera and volunteer?
Oh, yeah. They always need volunteers.
So they would just get in contact with the opera here? And I guess they have a whole department that deals with volunteers and helps? I'm sure you have to go through some training process as well?
Well, it depends. Yes, you do, for what you're going to, whatever particular area you're gonna be working in, yes.
Excellent.
Just a great staff here. Wonderful staff here at the Music Center.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you, ladies, so much. I know you're busy today, so thank you so much for spending a few minutes with us.
Oh, wonderful, yes, very. What's really fun is talking to the seniors here. They have a 103-year-old lady here that sees so many operas. She's gone, but she was a delight.
I know. People are so appreciative of this chance to come along, and we really appreciate what L.A. Opera does for the city's seniors. I'm here with Lillian Calamari. She's a program manager with SRO Housing, and she is with our senior program. Lillian, it's just so great to be here today. Is this the first time SRO Housing's had the chance to come to senior opera?
No, we come here whenever we can. I try to apply to get us in. Come about every other year, we're here.
Now, the seniors you work with generally are very low-income seniors. They have often a whole number of challenges that they're facing on a day-to-day basis. Tell me, how important are programs like this for them?
It's very important to them. They love to come here. It's a nice venue for them to participate in. We show them films of the opera before they come. We give a presentation. They really get excited about coming here. They love coming to the opera.
Yeah, it's a very important task for them to see live performances that perhaps they couldn't really afford to come along.
That's right.
In the general scheme of things.
That's right. And I rode the van up here with the seniors, and one senior was talking excitedly about how he had gotten a video from a library and watched it before they came. And they just really get into it, and they get books in the library about it. We present them information and educate them about the opera, but...
So it's much more than just the afternoon itself?
Yes, they love to study it before they come. They're very excited about venues like this. They also take them to the museums. They love the museums as well.
Yeah. It's also a great social opportunity for the seniors, really from all over the county of Los Angeles, to get together at events like this.
That's right.
How many seniors have you brought with you today?
We brought like 22 seniors with us today.
And is it just a case of applying for the tickets, or is there a little bit more to it than that?
Well, yeah, they need to sign up. We need to sign them up. And again, we have to educate them on the opera. We want them to know what they're seeing. They love to learn about things. They love education, and this is another education opportunity for them, to learn something.
And I think especially with the cuts in education programs, and certainly in programs that seniors can participate in for educational opportunities, opportunities like this are very rare, and we really need to support them as much as we can, because we want them to carry on for many years, and we want to have many seniors from all our senior centers coming along and getting this opportunity.
Lifelong education is very important for seniors. It keeps their minds active. It keeps them active. It keeps them interested in life. It's a very important thing.
Now, Lillian, I know you're also an art teacher.
Yes, I am.
I know, because every year we have our senior art exhibit at the City Hall in the Bridge Gallery there, and some of Lillian's participants at her classes, they enter their works in our annual exhibition.
Yes.
So also, tell us a little bit about that.
Well, it's an art workshop I started 18 years ago, when I first started working down on Skid Row. There were no programs. There were no art programs or education programs for the people. So I just went to one of the shelters and asked them if I could set up a little art workshop. And they said yes, and I did. So like four or five years I was teaching in a shelter. And then the company I worked for, SRO Housing Corporation, they wanted me to move it to our property, and they gave me a loft for the artists to work in. It was very nice.
And they're producing some amazing work.
Yes.
Really multimedia work, amazing work. And it's really just so important, how important the arts are to seniors in their everyday lives.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's very important.
Thank you. That was absolutely fantastic. From everyone here at Los Angeles Opera and for Aging Well in L.A., thank you for watching, and we'll see you next time.
We're also available online through lacity.org, where we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and we archive our past council meetings there for your convenience. Online, also, you can find our agendas, which are made public 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. Those are also posted in city buildings. And you can come to the council in two other ways, or listen to the council in two other ways, through your telephone, by calling 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. And you can listen in to our council meetings or our committee meetings. Or you can come to our remote facilities in Van Nuys or San Pedro, if that's closer to where you live, and testify from there, or just listen in to the council in those city council chambers. We have our agendas available in the back today, if there are any items that you'd like to talk on today. Items are split into items that have had hearings in committee and those that have not yet. Items that have already had their public hearings in committee require a council member to reopen those, or else we only have council member discussion of those. Any items that have not yet, though, had hearings, are automatically triggered by cards from the public. And we also have general public comment for items not on our agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, so just feel free to fill out a speaker card in the back and hand that to one of our sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to hear your comments. Again, this is, it is now after 10:10. Council members Alacon, Krikorian, Parks, Rosendahl, and Smith, we are waiting your presence. If we do not get a quorum by 10:15, we'll have to cancel the meeting. So please, if our sergeants-at-arms will assist us, and if we can get down to be respectful of the people's time here, thank you, and we'll begin shortly. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes. Who's excused from council at this time?
We have excuses from council members Wezar and Reyes. Mr. Laban's excused to arrive late, and then we have excuses to leave early for council members Alacon, Cardenas, and myself.
Thank you.
Thank you to Mr. Rosendahl. We do have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to call the roll.
President.
Thank you. First order of business, my understanding, colleagues, is that tomorrow is council member Krikorian's birthday. We're not meeting tomorrow, but we wanted to wish him a very happy birthday, and we hope that it's a good celebration. Yes, exactly, that's why we have all the seating here. But a very happy birthday to you, council member, we hope it's a good one. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Cardenas moves, and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection, that'll be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Kretz moves, and Mr. Parks seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. We can run through the agenda, and colleagues, if you will, please direct your attention to the agenda for any items you'd like to call special. First items, please.
Mr. President, item one is an ordinance notice for public hearing. Would you like to hold it on the desk until twelve members are present?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk.
Items two through five are street vacation hearing protests, notice for public hearing.
Okay. Do you not see cards on any of these? Do we have cards on any?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on those. Any specials, two through five, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Items six through, excuse me, items six through nine are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request from a member to continue item seven to March 29th.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue that till next Tuesday.
A committee report for item six has been submitted and distributed for council's consideration.
All right, Mr. Parks calls that special, number six. Anybody wishing to call number eight or nine special? If not, let's go ahead and take up eight and nine. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. We'll hold one special for cards, even though we have twelve members. Let's go to the next items, please.
Items ten through fourteen are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
There's no objection to consideration, those are before us.
Mr. President, there is a request from a member to continue item fourteen to March 30th.
Okay, without objection, we'll continue item number fourteen till the 30th. And any specials, we'll close the other public hearings, there's no cards, ten through thirteen. We'll close those public hearings. Anybody wishing to call a special from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on ten through thirteen and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item fifteen is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, we'll hold that on the desk. Okay. And if we can call the roll on the special meeting, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Kretz, Krikorian, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call sixteen special? We have a card, but there's been a public hearing, there's no motion to reopen a public hearing, we'll put that in the record. If nobody wishes to call sixteen special, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on sixteen.
Excuse me, sir, sixteen is item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Has it not? I'm sorry, I have it written here that it had been held, but we'll ask Arnold Sachs then to come forward on item sixteen for public comment. Good morning, Mr. Sachs.
Good morning, Mr. President. Just as a point of clarification, didn't you have to adjourn the regular meeting before you entered into the special?
Vice versa, sir.
Excuse me? A vice versa? Okay. Memorandum on understanding between the redevelopment agency and the DWP. The problem, again, with these contracts is that it's providing $400,000 for a three-year term with an option to extend up to two additional years. So, does the $400,000 cover three years? Does the $400,000 cover the five years? And if it doesn't cover the five years, because further on it says, including $500,000 in LAP, LAPDWP funds in budget line economic development opportunities for the Citywide Non-Housing Work Program. The problem there is that $500,000 isn't for that program. Only $400,000 is for that program. $100,000 is for the administration of the program. So again, it's all in the wording. It's always in the wording, it's always something that you have to look for. So is it $100,000 for five years, which is $20,000 a year to administrate? Or is it $100,000 for three years, which is $33,000 to administrate? Could you please clarify that for your constituents? The people that you represent, maybe one or two or a thousand or whatever, might want to know, because they're going to be dealing with the fallout from the $400,000, $400 million budget deficit. Thank you.
And Mr. Sachs, I hope you take this the right way, but I know that you sometimes just read the summary. The supporting materials give you all that detail, and that is made available to anybody in the public, including yourself, to be able to see what the span of that is and those details. So appreciate the comment, and I just want, this is not for to respond to, sir, but that is available for every person in this audience and anybody online, and it's also available over here if anybody would like to read it. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. President, for clarification, there is a staff report from the chief legislative analyst on this item that has been circulated.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll move that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved, and we will adjourn the special meeting, come back to the regular meeting, and we'll go through our comment cards. We'll start with general public comment, and like to invite Monica De La Torre to come forward as our first speaker. Good morning. After that will be Michael, or Mikal Waters.
Good morning, members of the council.
Good morning.
You have reached 911. All operators are busy. Your call will be answered by the next available operator. Please do not hang up. Usted ha llamado a la policía de Los Ángeles. Todos los operadores están ocupados. La próxima operadora disponible contestará su llamada. En el futuro llame a 1-877-275-5273 para llamadas que no sean de emergencia. Gracias. My name is Monica De La Torre. I'm a police service representative, widely known as a 911 operator, police dispatcher for the city of Los Angeles, LAPD. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, here we stand. We are not police officers, we're not firemen, we are the nameless, faceless civilian operators that are the first line of contact when you dial 911 from your landline, when you dial 911 from your cellphone. We are the civilian employees who are vital to the safety of the citizens of Los Angeles and the police officers of the department, and we are taking furloughs. We are here this morning to identify how the imposed furloughs are affecting efficient emergency services to the public and the safety of police officers on patrol, and outline why police service representatives working in the metropolitan and valley dispatch centers should be exempt from furloughs and/or any impending labor concessions. It should be understood that when emergency services are in need, if you do not reach a 911 operator, you will not get police response. If you do not reach a 911 operator, you will not get in contact with the fire department. As forementioned, we are the first line of contact for emergency services.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your service. Michael Waters is our next speaker. After that is Jorge Rios. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I'm police service representative Mikal Waters. Once furloughs were imposed, service levels decreased for calls received via 911, putting emergency response for those callers in jeopardy. In order to adjust to the constraints furloughs have placed upon 911 services, modifications were made to deploy the majority of staffing to answer 911 calls. This resulted in below minimum staffing to answer non-emergency calls and calls received from Spanish-speaking citizens, which in turn posed another problem. During busy periods, our phone system is designed to filter the overflow of 911 calls to the non-emergency queue and the Spanish queue. When this occurs, these calls will receive priority over other calls. However, when every non-emergency operator is not available handling non-emergency calls, that 911 caller will remain on hold until an operator is available. It also leaves Spanish-speaking callers at a disadvantage of receiving prompt emergency services when placed on hold longer, while that Spanish-speaking operator is handling the 911 calls placed at a higher priority. According to call statistics, these calls can hold for over sixty seconds. The statistics only indicate up to sixty seconds, but in actuality, that caller could be on hold considerably longer. While these callers are on hold, a citizen could be having a heart attack, a citizen could be holding helplessly while their house is ablaze, a criminal could have an increased opportunity to flee, a child could be choking, and victims of tragic traffic collisions could be waiting with bated breath for paramedic assistance. Essentially, the attempts to adapt to the imposed furloughs create a domino effect of problems, which all lead to city liabilities and hinder the safety and welfare of the public. In addition, PSRs are placed under pressure to answer and complete calls more efficiently. In the quest to service the community more efficiently and answer the multitude of calls increased by furloughs, operators may inadvertently fail to receive pertinent information.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service as well. Jorge Rios is our next speaker. Is Jorge Rios here? Okay, Valerie Covington, next speaker. Okay, thank you for being here, we'll make sure that these names are on the record as well. Miana Pace. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Miana Pace. These pressures that furloughs have placed upon PSRs can result in inept service, which compromise officer's safety. In the police department, we have twenty-one patrol divisions and four traffic divisions. Each division requires an operator at all times. Each division can have up to forty to fifty officers working per watch. On occasion, a task force is formed to combat a specific issue in a community, which also may require an operator on occasion. When deployment is compromised due to furloughs, one operator is required to work two radio frequencies simultaneously. One operator. Handling officer emergencies, keeping abreast of each officer's status, and handling miscellaneous requests for up to eighty to ninety officers. The increased workload and decreased workforce is taking a toll on the physical health of each operator. High stress, repetitive strain injuries, and the like are on the rise. Increasing injuries on duty also place a greater fiscal strain on the city. There are nearly sixty million citizens in the city of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley. There are over nine thousand sworn officers in the police department, yet there are just over four hundred police service representatives assigned to the metropolitan and valley dispatch centers servicing the multitude of citizens and sworn police personnel. The number of operators required to adequately sustain the operation of the dispatch centers have been decreased due to the furloughs, and the citizens are aware. Just last month, at a town hall meeting in Studio City, a citizen complained of waiting nearly ten minutes on hold when a 911 call was placed. Chief Beck conceded this point and explained to the citizen that budget cuts were to blame due to furloughs on 911 operators.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kretz?
I don't know from a point of parliamentary procedure whether we in any way are able to address this, but I for one was not aware that 911 operators were being furloughed, and I don't know if there's a way to ask that question of our CAO.
We can discuss a number of things during the financial status report that may touch on that. During general public comment, we can only very briefly respond under the Brown Act, so not going to take any of our silence, please, as...
So perhaps we can discuss that.
Not being able to hear that, but it's just under, this is for items that are not on the agenda today, but we certainly can bring that up in the financial status report, I think it touches on that, and you can take that initiative for sure, Mr. Kretz. Anthony Rivers, like to speak next? After Mr. Rivers, David Diaz will be our next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is PSR Anthony Rivers. As elected officials, the safety and well-being of your constituents and police officers should be your top priority. In the event of an impending catastrophic earthquake, domestic terrorist attack, or other unusual occurrence, will the 911 centers be adequately staffed to handle the influx of calls and needs of the city? No. They will not with the currently imposed furloughs. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, you cannot put a price on safety. Last year, the dispatch center received nearly four million calls on 911, non-emergency and Spanish lines, excluding alarm calls, received from alarm companies, outside agencies, and a litany of calls from within the department. You must be proactive, not reactive. A proactive response will keep the city prepared for what may be ahead. A proactive response will limit the exposure of fiscal city liabilities. We implore you to exempt the police service representatives, correction, representatives of the police department assigned to the metropolitan and valley dispatch centers from furloughs and/or impending labor concessions. If it is your intent to keep the integrity of emergency services as safe as possible from current financial limitations, police service representatives assigned to both dispatch centers should also be included, for we are essential to the success and the effectiveness of the police and fire departments, for the sake of public service and for the sake of public safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service as well. Our next speaker is David Diaz. After that is Alex Diaz, and then we will go to Van Nuys for some speakers before coming back here. Good morning, sir.
I'm David Diaz, I'm a plumber with Plumbers Local Seventy-Eight. I'm in support of the football stadium because it will bring back jobs, get me employed. I've been out of work for a year and a half already, and it will really bring back the economy to LA. And I would just ask you guys, please support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your words today. Alex Diaz? After that, we'll go to Van Nuys, and we'll hear from David Mendoza. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, city council. I'm Alonzo Diaz, I'm also a plumber from Local Seventy-Eight, and I'm also in support of the football stadium. And I've been out of work for two years, I'm on my last unemployment extension, you know, so football stadium being worked back, you know, actually working back to work, so please support the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to Van Nuys. David Mendoza will be followed by Calvin Johnson. Good morning, Mr. Mendoza.
Buenos dias, todos los miembros. Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí frente a ustedes, y estamos muy contentos, muy entusiasma, muy entusiasta sobre estos proyectos, sobre estos trabajos que están en proyecto, donde no dudamos de la capacidad de ustedes, donde van a apoyar con toda su capacidad, y también este...
One moment. Okay, continue, por favor.
... donde estamos todos muy entusiastas sobre estos trabajos, todas las familias se van a beneficiar bastante. Gracias por todas estas oportunidades que nos dan, esperamos que todos estos proyectos se lleven a cabo, y muchas familias vamos a beneficiarnos tanto en lo económico, en la salud, que ya que la ciudad de Los Ángeles lo requiere muchísimo. Gracias, y que Dios los bendiga. Gracias.
Okay, I just wanted to say, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate all the services. I know that all that you can do, and if you pay attention to the need of the city, many families are going to be able to benefit, because we need those services, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Calvin Johnson is our next speaker, then Pedro Alfaro, also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning. I am from IBW Local Eleven, and I'm for the football stadium that's going to be built, proposed to be built, that farmer field, and is wanting to know that every time a project comes up like this, it's like it goes through a lot of loops and hassles to get these things done, and to me, I think everybody will win-win if this football stadium is built. I mean, the city needs the revenues, people needs jobs, unemployment is high, and we all should all support this to happen, because the developers are there, so let's do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Pedro Alfaro is our next speaker, then Michael Buchanan.
Good morning, city council. My name is Pedro Alfaro, I live in Bakersfield. We need these jobs here. If you guys don't understand, I work for the Staples, LA Live, J Mary, and they gave me the opportunity to buy a house, to keep my son, you know, in a good school and everything, and we need... and we need all this. If we build this stadium, it will bring a lot more jobs, more tourism to this place. Like I said again, I'm an ironworker, Local 416 reinforcing, and that's all I got to say. Thank you. You guys have a good day.
Thank you. You too. Thank you for bringing your son as well. Michael Buchanan is our next speaker. After that is Victor Acuna. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Buchanan. I'm with Local 416, Iron Workers, Los Angeles. I'm here today from Camero, California. I'm here in support of the Farmers Field Stadium. Been out of work for a while. Jobs have been hit and miss. A job of this size is going to bring work for everybody, not just ironworkers, but electricians, carpenters, and after it, you got to keep it going. Let's see, I've had to leave the state of California just to go and find work, leaving my family, leaving them, my children, my family. I'm a single parent. It's a little hard to do that. I'm getting ready to look at actually leaving again. We call that booming out, but a job of this size, that'll keep me home around my children, where they can say, you know, dad was there. There's really not much more I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang in there. Victor Acuna is our next speaker. After that, Lorraine O'Nellis here.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
My name is Victor Acuna. I live in Santa Cora de Bali. I'm a member of Local 416 reinforcements. I need to ask you guys for, we're in favor of this project right here, because we need you guys' support, we need that work. I've been, I've been out of work for five months, and you guys know how it is with, it's hard to be without work, okay? Our family needs a lot of things, and I've been here in this world for three years, for the past three years, and we ask you guys to please support us on this right here, so all the trades can get jobs, and so we can get back in track, and I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to testify today. Lorraine O'Nellis is here in council chambers, then we'll go back to Van Nuys for Miriam Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. Lorraine O'Nellis, 2731 Kirkoff Avenue, San Pedro, Council District 15. I worked the last city election, which in my opinion cost this city an exorbitant amount of money. I graduated from Hoyuk High School in Massachusetts when I was 16 years old, and worked in a paper mill as a cost clerk until I was old enough to enter nursing school, my chosen profession. I estimated costs of producing paper products. If we were not going to realize a profit, we did not produce the product. I am here to ask that you seriously consider having city elections vote by mail only to save money. You have no idea how much the last city election has cost you. I have been working on the city election board and the county since 1956, when I moved to San Pedro. In this past election, I worked in a county precinct where we had 21 voters from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. The salaries for four board members at that precinct was $415, which cost $22.14 per vote. Didn't count the 829 ballots that we had to return. My daughter worked in a city precinct where they had more items on the agenda, and they had six precinct workers for a salary of $675, which decreased the cost to $8.35 per vote. This did not include the 1,020 ballots that were extra that had to be returned. Additional costs include printing of all sample ballots in the various languages. I didn't speak two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Nellis.
In addition, we are each providing...
I'm sorry, ma'am, we have to try to keep it as fair as possible, the two-minute clock for each person, but...
It was only one minute.
We had it on two minutes.
I timed it earlier.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I swear to you, it was two minutes, so... But if you want to give us the rest of your testimony, we can make sure it gets circulated, and...
Yeah, everybody, I want to reach back.
Thank you.
And city employees...
Thank you, ma'am.
... that have been expected to work, I pay the regular salary.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry, we have to end the testimony there, but we did actually take this issue up, just so you know, we've costed out both the vote-by-mail-only, so we'll see if we can get you to copy that report, too, because it has exactly those ideas you've talked about. Thank you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker in Van Nuys, then John Walsh will be next here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Are we, okay, we're on 16 or a public comment?
General public comment, ma'am.
Okay. You know, we are in the midst here of a great disaster, and we don't have leaders anywhere in the world. No one, not even Obama. He's putting his head in the sand. You know, our city officials here are digging in to bankrupt the city. Folks, they're going for the whole thing. Like Jen Perry said, they're going, the whole city council is going to go and make everybody redevelopment. Why don't we just rename the city of Los Angeles Redevelopment? The City of Redevelopment? Or a matter of fact, the state of California, for that matter, because after all, that's the whole caboodle, and I couldn't get down here, probably throat, but, you know, they, because the guy in Barstow didn't want to vote against redevelopment. They have a big cloud here, folks. You think it's going to be good? Well, they're going to shut down the city, and you're not going to have any services, and the redevelopment are appointed and are private agency, and they will tell you what to do. There won't be any more elections, because they're going to take away your rights. That's why they put item number 14 on hold, because they want to round up the guns, and they all gave themselves state of California and the right to carry CCW permits, and I don't know if the local officials here, the city officials here can. A matter of, you think that you're above God, you think you're more privileged, more rights than I am and other people in the city and county and state and the country that have a right to carry a gun concealed, not even more or less have it open. I think it's, to me, is a violation of everybody's right to protect themselves from violent people, violence.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
That's taking over, going overseas.
Thank you, and I know as our employees leave, just want to thank you again for being here. I know that you have a very important job to do. We will be addressing that later in this meeting, and so we look forward to addressing your concerns. Thank you very much for the work you do and for being here as well. Hold on one second, Mr. Walsh. Hold on one second, Mr. Walsh. Hold on. Mr. Walsh, would you like to address the council now? Go ahead.
I want you to know, it's a civil rights violation. File a federal complaint. If Spanish speakers are one minute losing one minute, that means it's against federal law. You file a federal complaint. These people aren't on your side.
Mr. Garcetti, he should be in the business of the council. Thank you.
I'm talking, you know, I have, what do I have to do? Get on my knees in front of you? I can't even talk to workers. You know, what I like about you people, politically correct fascists, and did you notice the complexion of these people? These people are minorities, and thank God for these minority workers. What you paint us, thank you very much. Everybody should be very happy, Mr. Parks should be very happy, because community activist Damian Goodman needs a liver. He's dying. He needs a liver transplant, and I understand that Mr. Parks, when he heard that, said one less uppity black person in South Central to oppose me. And if he didn't say that, come like a man and tell me you didn't say that. I'm Mr. Rosendahl. You got Zuma Dog, a white activist, an apartment on the top of the list in Venice, but now a block activist is dying, and there's not one of you, and he's spoken in front of here on Fix Expo, not one of you that give a damn. You want to see all the activists, black, white, brown, or yellow, dead. Go to redevelopment.com, zevholywoodhighlands.org, hollywoodhighlands.org. A new post will come up on Friday. Hollywoodhighlands.org, zev for mayor, zev Yaroslavsky for mayor, dual endorsement, Alex Padilla for mayor, and the rest of us, and you for anything but president of the city council. You're not going to get it. Hollywoodhighlands.org.
Richard Robinson is our next speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Always a pleasure to see you. After Mr. Robinson will be Elizabeth Fuld, I'm sorry, I can't quite read the last name, but Elizabeth will be after that. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Mr. President, members. Patrick Henry said, "Give me liberty or give me debt." Nathan Hale said, "I might not agree with what you say, but I'll defend to the death your right to say it." Sir, we disagree constantly with what the public comes here showing at you. It could be a lot worse. Pardon me, sir. Senator Feinstein brilliantly is defending gay marriage. Los Angeles Times, common knowledge. Daily News, Washington DC, US to seek gay rights support at United Nations. Sanity is coming to the issue of gay marriage. Sir, my sister, in 1956, her lover committed suicide. This is the first time I mention that, this is the first time I talk about that, but it's a personal issue with me, why I'm so vehemently against those who don't recognize that in defending marriage, it is the right of gay and lesbian lovers to marry, which defends marriage. Thank you. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Appreciate your comments. Is there an Elizabeth that wanted to speak? And my apologies for not quite your last name, if you'll just state for the record your full name. Good morning.
For the record, my name is Elizabeth Saldivar.
Saldivar, thank you.
And I'm here to address the city council for a very important concern. I would like to request the city controller to make an audit and to open an investigation of a possible conflict of interest with Ms. Beatrice Olvera Stotzer, who is the City of Los Angeles Housing Authority Commissioner Chair, and she is also the executive, chief executive of New Capital Property Management, which manages my units. El Corazon Apartments is a city subsidized hood home project. It receives California hood tax allocation credit subsidies, and it's a building for low-income housing. This management company has been, and it's in noncompliance with the regulatory agreement with the loans and what is required from Los Angeles Housing Department. We have many people who are concerned. There has been four discrimination cases filed from my units, 14 families from Tierra del Sol, and please look at the news where she has been misusing public funding, and the $3 million that were stolen by New Academy, which is in the LA Times. This is serious, and it needs to be looked at, and I would like to speak to someone to address this concern. It is public monies, and she is a public official, but she's also a private business owner, and I believe there is double-dipping, is a new term for me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We appreciate it very much. Candido Maris is our next speaker. Noel Weiss will follow after Mr. Maris, and we will go to San Pedro.
Good morning, President, council members. Public safety is number one, and I am here today to speak strongly in support of the LAPD, the LA Fire Department, and especially the Criminal Division of the City Attorney's Office, where their numbers have been reduced from 117 million down to approximately 73 million. We are in a crisis, and we are about to experience it in the next two years. I truly believe that within the next two years, we will have an earthquake here in City Hall, and I'm not talking about a financial earthquake, I'm talking about the real one will happen, and we will need every available person when it comes to public safety. And to those 911 operators, thank you, because you truly are the guardian angels of this city of angels, and so I hope that you will work hard to make sure that we keep the public safety of this city intact. I know you can do it. The leadership's there. Mr. Garcetti, I know you have the leadership with this city council to help keep jobs and to make sure that this city stays safe, so I hope that you'll work towards those goals, and there are a lot of things that we can do to cut costs without cutting people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We'll be addressing some of those shortly on the financial status report. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After that, we'll go to San Pedro and Charles Leon.
Council members, good morning. I owe Mr. Gakkorian again a thank you. I got, I use up my two minutes with regard to the CRA issues, and it's not often that one council member essentially calls out another, but I think, and Mr. West was most gracious in his response, that essentially, he didn't have enough time to negotiate this, and that's why the council did not have sufficient time to evaluate it. But going forward, hopefully, that's not just procedural, but substantive, and on this, and again, I appreciate Mr. Gakkorian's having done that, shall we say. With regard to the NFL stadium issue, sounds like Mr. Delvec and his group are setting us all up for a statement of overriding considerations. Environmental is not going to work, but notwithstanding, we have to build the stadium anyway due to these economic issues. I want to, again, propose an idea, what I call the 100,000-10K solution, empowering the people economically. Green Bay Packers are owned by the people of Green Bay. 100,000 people, 10,000 a person in a city of 4 million, that's a billion dollars, okay? And I think Mr. Louieke could be very, very, not just forthcoming, but incredibly progressive if AEG involves the people in this endeavor, and by the way, it would be equity, not debt, and that would make it more cost-effective going forward in terms of providing something to the people. Finally, and I want to suggest on a more positive note, rather than have Mr. Gakkorian or others call you each other out, I want to have a situation where we have every Friday, since the place is packed, we have a situation where we've got one council member basically giving a State of the Council speech, and like in British Parliament, for another 10 or 15 minutes after that, you guys can question each other, and you know what? In terms of theater, in terms of substance and style, it would be very effective, because it's very important symbolically for the people to see that the city council deliberates, and it's not just 15 to nothing, and there's some thought going by what you're doing. That's my suggestion. Maybe it'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. We'll next go to San Pedro, and Charles Leon will be our next speaker, and come back here for Arnold Saxon Chambers. Good morning, sir.
Council President Garcetti, thank you so much for your time. I'm calling from San Pedro, and your honorable body, if only they knew the number of potholes from the drive from downtown Los Angeles to San Pedro. I'm representing the working men and women of street services. You and your leadership with Weezer back in January called to study classifications for exemption of furloughs in street services. Sir, I'm speaking before you today because there is the ability to take street services and all of their field staff off of furloughs. You've been told about a 90% reimbursable rate, you've been told about impacts to the general fund, and I'm telling you right now, the scare tactics that are being used, that if we were to take street services off of furloughs, that somehow it's going to have to have us do an extra furlough for other workers in the city, is absolute hogwash. We're counting on your leadership. They call it the Acting Bureau of Street Services because they don't even have the number of people to do the jobs that they need to do, and furloughs have made things worse. Of all the bureaus in the Department of Public Works, nobody has given back more to the city of Los Angeles than the Bureau of Street Services. So we're counting on your leadership. Today, you have the ability to take all field staff in the Bureau of Street Services off of furloughs. They have... They have surplus gas tax dollars. Gas tax money residents pay for. Trees are falling. There's potholes. The resurfacing models aren't going to get complete. These are needs and services our constituents want. Constituents here in San Pedro, constituents in Hollywood, constituents in Eagle Rock, constituents in South LA. We have the ability to take the remaining field staff, all field staff in the street services off of furloughs. Please, sir, the impact of the general fund is just not there. We have the surplus gas tax dollars. Don't buy into the scare tactics. Return vital services to a full work schedule. That's what you called for in January. It still hasn't gotten done. We need your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much and thank you for your tireless work on this as well, Charles. Um, we will next hear from Arnold Sacks as he's coming up. Mr. LeBanc for an introduction.
Uh, right now I have a special introduction, some great young people from Nimitz Middle School, from the city of Honeytum Park. Stand and be recognized by the city council. Welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. I think there's the future, right there. There's the guy. What's that guy's name right there? He's very good. He's not scared of anything. Good job. Welcome, Nimitz.
Thank you very much and welcome to City Hall. Mr. Sacks, our next speaker, then we'll hear from Walter Bechtel.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Please, Mr. President, when you discussed the outline of the council meetings, you mentioned being cognizant of people's time. You shouldn't be, shouldn't have to say that. Again, we run this show. This is like Groundhog Day. Every year with your budget deficit, it's a matter of the time. You have a 400 million budget deficit this year. Show up, show your constituents you're ready to go to work at 10 o'clock. Can't do that, then how do we know that you can do other work? I'd like to make some comments about some things people said. The woman who talked about consolidating, uh, the elections. Consider consolidating the elections to one day. I mean, you have alternating day, alternating years for your council seats, but consolidation with maybe the school board, with maybe the state elections. The manuals that are handed out by the county, is anybody considered to re, uh, getting, getting those back, giving the election workers fees to save those? Another bit of information, yesterday's newspaper mentioned that the housing director was fired, released from his job. He went on to say that, A, he's getting $440,000 a year plus 10 weeks paid vacation, which comes out to about another $82,000 a year. Please, and Mr. President, you clarified about information. Please clarify what the hell somebody does to hand $520,000 in the city of LA. What do you, how do these people get compensated? Who do they know? Mr. Mr., um, Yaroslavsky for mayor, he couldn't replace Mayor McFry.
Thank you, sir. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker.
Uh, okay. Uh, I just want to add something a little bit more to what I said yesterday about the football stadium. Uh, I'd like to reiterate, I don't think it's a good idea for a football stadium to be put downtown LA. It's already overcrowded here. We got problems with the movie people and we've got plenty down there already at the, uh, the Staples Center. Uh, if you put the football stadium in here, all that construction is great and find all these people employed, but all the businesses are going to suffer just like they did up and down Wiltshire when you put in the subway. I, I think that, like again, I said before, I don't think, you shouldn't put it in the city. You should put it up towards Lancaster or something like that. People out towards Lancaster and Palmdale are more football kind of people. I, I was born out there in Lancaster. I know those are the, that kind of people out there. And I don't see how that's going to hurt the, the construction industry. Those people are still going to have jobs and it's going to benefit the county of Los Angeles, uh, without the, the problem of the overcrowding. And I think a couple of people come on the radio and other places have said that it's really going to hurt more than it's going to help if you put an extra amount of something in the downtown area. You say you're moving forward. Well, if, if you're moving forward, you got to understand that you, you keep putting too many people in one place. That's the mentality of people when we only had a few thousand people in the city of Los Angeles. Now we have several million people. If you're going to move forward, you got to move out to the places where the people are going to be. And it's going to move out towards Lancaster and that area and it's going to fill the whole area of the county of Los Angeles. I think it's more intelligent to move out there. And, um, I don't see where it wouldn't benefit the city of LA anyway, because if the construction is being done with, with the same people, it's still going to employ them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our general public comment. Uh, we'll now turn to public comment on items called special. Start with number one, Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward and John Walsh will follow
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. We want to adopt an ordinance authorizing an order in the removal of weeds, rubbish, refuse and dirt upon certain streets, sidewalks, parkways or in front of certain private properties in the city of LA. So, uh, you've had items on your agenda recently regarding the CRA and they're being paid or they're, they're creating contracts to make improvements to sidewalks. Then again, what happens if the property is in a CRA area, project zone? Um, who pays for that? Who's going to pay for the workers? You just heard from somebody from Bureau of Street Services that is gonna, that claims that you have, you, budget deficit, furloughs. So where are you going to get the workers? You're going to outsource this work now? You're going to charge the homeowner, the business owner? What happens? The sidewalks to be repaired? You can't get redevelopment funds into redevelopment areas, but you can get redevelopment funds for redevelopment project areas. And again, the language being, project is going up, being funded through redevelopment, then the area around it is also included. But in areas of low income where redevelopment is established to, to help the property owners, they can't get labeled as redevelopment project areas because it keeps the property values down. If you raise the property values, then everybody else would be able to step up. Just take example, the sale in Hollywood versus the sale of property in South Central. $800,000 versus 4 million. It's a joke.
Thank you, sir. John Walsh will be our next speaker and Mr. Sacks will have your comments on item 15
I'm leaving after this, uh, this agenda item. Uh, there was some staff people. Uh, I don't need to filibuster you. I get 1.2 million successful seller requests in the past 12 months. Uh, this concerns weed abatement. Go to Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org or go to Hollywood Dems, Hollywood and D-E-M-S at gmail dot com to give us information. Uh, and also Twitter us at Mickey Jackson or Facebook and friend, become a friend of Mickey Jackson and myself at M-I-K-I-J-Jackson. Yeah, the weeds are growing. The weeds are overgrown and maybe that's where you can hide the bodies of the people who have heart attacks because they only spoke Spanish and spent an extra two minutes on the line before the ambulance came. You can hide them in the weeds. Hollywood Highlands dot org. Venceramus.
All righty, uh, we have, um, 15, Mr. Sacks and Mr. Walsh. I think Mr. Walsh has passed, um, on item 15.
Thank you again.
You are.
Arnold Sacks. Again, this is a case arises out of the city's construction of curb ramps. So again, I mentioned in previous council actions during the past couple of weeks, you've had CRA going to make improvements in sidewalks, in roadways. That include creating, uh, construction of street ramps. The point being here, the CRA is in a city agency, is in a city department. It's not, it's not inherent to follow the city budgetary processes. So if the CRA builds something like this or doesn't build something for a curb ramp, why would the city then be liable? And we go back again to last year during the budget discussions in Councilman Parks saying the city can't afford to fix sidewalks, but the CRA can afford to fix sidewalks. So it's a, it's like a, a high-speed game of ping pong and the public is the ball. And if you've ever watched that on TV, they smashed the crap out of that ball. How much is this settlement going to cost us? Oh, no, excuse me. How much is this settlement going to cost the city public? Because I'm not living in the city, but I do come down here just to ask some questions. Thanks again for your time. Answers.
And a thank you. We will close our public comment, uh, on this one. And, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and if we can take up items one and six, sorry, we're going to take 15 up and close session one. If we can take a vote on that, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. That'll take us to item number six and I'd like to recognize our Budget and Finance Chairman, Mr. Parks, and our CAO as well.
Mr. President, could we have the CAO and the CLA at the table, please? Colleagues, while they're coming up, uh, I think first of all, uh, and, uh, from the Budget and Finance Committee perception is that, uh, the third Financial Status Report or the mid-year report, uh, is probably some of the finest word by the city CAO in being able to find $50 million, as they said, looking in the, uh, under the couches, uh, looking under pillows of chairs. And the things that I think is important as they go through their presentation for you to identify, they were able to maintain $191 million in our reserve fund, which is particularly important as we move forward for next year and talk about trans and how much money that we may have to spend in that regard and how much interest we may have to pay. They also were able to close this gap down to $4 million by not adding one more furlough day to a city employee. The key on this issue, not saying we could make that promise for next fiscal year, but for this report at mid-year, they were able to find $50 million, reduce the deficit to 4 million without giving one more furlough day. So that's a remarkable set of circumstances. Uh, they have also created a document that we'll be dealing with in Budget and Finance in the near future that talks about at least 50 recommendations of either merging departments, reorganizing the city, reworking how the city should perform its duties. And this is something that will be coming to the council down the road. But I think as we move forward, just as we heard today from the presentation of PSRs, every department has a statement that if they were given more money, they could be more effective. Every department believes if they were given more money, they would be able to do more for the community. This proposal today allows everybody to have somewhat equal pain. And the issue is if we go through it and start moving pieces of it, it will pop out somewhere else. So by moving dollars to one department, you're taking dollars from another department. By eliminating furloughs, the additional furloughs for everyone, if you move money there, it could cause a furlough to occur. So these are things I think we have to think about. By no means am I telling you this is a perfect report, but I think when you go through it, you'll see it basically has addressed the direction we've given them. Uh, we thought that it was not appropriate to add five more furlough days to employees in the middle of the fiscal year. Uh, we also thought that it was important that we not lose sight of the importance of the reserve fund and we shouldn't take the reserve fund lightly because everyone from our, uh, bond people to those who monitor what we do are watching how stringent we are as relates to dealing with this. And even with the 191 million dollars, it's still $28 million short of our goal of a 5% reserve fund. But it gives us something to keep building on and it's something that we should not look at it as just a pot of money to move forward. And so let me ask Miguel to move forward in giving an overview. We certainly do not need to go through the detail we went in committee, but certainly I think it's important to give the overview, the four-year projection, uh, the reserve fund issues and the things that are relevant and also tie it into the discussion that we had about what's coming on the, uh, 50 proposals that you put together and how it ties into next year's budget to secure some decisions made today to ensure that we get a full year recovery next year.
Thank you, Councilman Miguel Santana, CAO. Good morning. Why don't we start off with simply looking at this fiscal year first and then we'll talk briefly regarding the, the three-year plan that we updated from last year. So I'll be working off the document that's, uh, the subject line reads Third Financial Status Report. Um, there were three documents that were submitted on Friday. If you could look specifically on page number four of that document, it shows a pie chart. It shows a pie chart that basically shows how we resolve the remainder of this year's deficit as a result of not moving forward on the P3. Um, the revised target that we now have is $42.7 million. It went down because we were able to make some changes in our revenue assumptions, uh, particularly when it relates to ambulance billing. There was, uh, concern at the time that when we switched over to a private vendor, that the state was not acknowledging that vendor in terms of reimbursements. They have now acknowledged that new vendor and we will be fully reimbursed for those, uh, for that work. So that's on target. And a number of other revisions in terms of revenue and deficits that have been closed within departments. So the problem we're trying to solve for today is $42.7 million. And as the Councilman indicated, uh, we were given the direction by the Budget and Finance Committee to do so without no additional furlough days and without any additional layoffs. And so what I instructed my staff to do is to literally go through every single account that we have as a city and determine whether it's on target. Reevaluate our revenue assumptions in a variety of areas and as a result, we were able to close the majority of those accounts. Normally we do this at the end of the fiscal year. Um, what we're doing it in advance. So to summarize, uh, those include a revision and looking at capital projects that have been closed, whatever surplus exists that were budget, was budgeted for those projects. Normally those savings would go back to buy down the debt that was issued or go back to the reserve fund. We're recommending that $8 million be targeted for, to close out this year. There is a surplus of $3 million of SPRF funds that we're recommending be brought back. An additional million that was set aside for the completion of the P3 project, then because we're not moving forward, we can now add that, which is 4 million. A revision of our savings in our health account and those savings come as a result of the 5% premium that EAA employees are contributing to this year as a result of that. Uh, a 7 million in increase in gas tax funding, um, that allows us then to take out of the general, a portion of the general fund subsidy that goes into street services, um, and use that money. Um, and UB, uh, and taking out 13 million that we believe is not necessary out of the UB. Uh, there are two pieces in here that do result in a change in services or targeted, um, areas. One is we are recommending not moving forward on the remaining class, uh, in, in the, in the police workforce. Uh, we are recommending because the voters have approved a, a new pension system that becomes effective July 1st, that we delay in that final class, um, and hire, and make their official hiring date be after that new pension system kicks in. Uh, that provides a, a small amount of savings this year, about 700,000. That provides a small amount of savings this year, about $700,000. But in the lifetime of that employee, because they will now be under the new pension system, it will provide us a $7 million savings in the pension system. And we are recommending a small reduction in the Department of Wreckin' Parks of 2.8 million. That was an additional funding that was provided by your council beyond what is mandated through the charter. So in total, it closes the majority of the gap. There is a $4.1 million to be determined area, and we will be able to hopefully, between now and the end of the fiscal year, find additional solutions to close that gap. What this does, it preserves the reserve fund. The reserve fund is a critical part of our financing. It's what rating agencies look at to determine our fiscal health. And while we have a strong, a solid rating, credit rating, we need to maintain that as we borrow money out with our trans early next fiscal year. So it leaves the reserve fund at $191 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Miguel, you're going to go through the...
Sure. Would you like me to do the three-year plan now? Okay. So, so there's two, there's really one action that we're asking you to consider for today, and that is related to closing out the deficit for this fiscal year. There was an additional document that we submitted that provided a three-year outlook for the future, and made a half a billion dollars worth of recommendations and options to all of you to consider to address the deficits that we know will be coming next year and the following year and the year after that. And so we won't, I do not recommend going through all of the different proposals in there. We'll be working with the Chairman of Budget and Finance and the Chairman of your respective committees to discuss the individual items. But what we're doing briefly today is just giving you a brief overview of what we're recommending. I'll do that now, and we'll put a PowerPoint together to do that. The first slide simply shows, if you could go to the next slide, is it really reminds us all that we've been on a, making progress in reducing over $1 billion in the last two years. We often don't get credit for the fact that we've made so much, so many reductions throughout our system, and utilize a number of one-time solutions, but also ongoing solutions to achieve that. If you go to the next slide, it gives you an indication of how our budget has changed in the last 10 years. The budget has grown and reached its peak in 2008, and has been on a, has slowly started reducing, and will continue on that trajectory. The third slide really gives you a real sense of how much we've reduced the workforce in a very short period of time. The workforce that we have today, particularly in the civilian side, is the smallest workforce we've had in 10 years. So Mayor Riordan had, in his last terms, had a larger workforce than the one that you're currently governing over. And so it's important to show, particularly for folks who may criticize us of not engaging in ongoing reductions, that in a period of two years, the workforce has been cut by 4,000 employees. That's an unprecedented reduction in a very short period of time. And when you contrast that number with only 500 layoffs, we've done this in a way to avoid the impact not only to the economy, because we know layoffs, we already have a very high unemployment rate in Los Angeles, but we've also done it in a way to minimize the impact on our workforce. The next slide gives, reminds us all of all the solutions that were adopted in your budget, and if you go through them, not all of them came to fruition, or throughout the year, we've been making adjustments to ensure that we close the year in the black with the healthy reserve fund. And one of the things that we get recognized in Wall Street is the fact that on a quarterly basis, we open up the budget, adjust it to reflect drops in revenue or increases in expenditures, to ensure that we remain balanced throughout the course of the year. So this is how we started, and of course, if we were to revise that, that would change. We wouldn't have the one-time parking revenue, parking facilities element in there as an example. So the following chart five shows you where we are today. And basically, I just summarize all the different pieces that we're recommending you approve to ensure that we end the year not only in the black, but also with a solid reserve fund of $190 million. The slide six shows you how the reserve fund has fluctuated. And we've been, we, it's, the voters approved requiring the city to have a 2.75 reserve fund for emergency purposes. This calculates in that, that requirement, and then allows for an additional element so that we have enough room for cash flow, for changes in our revenue and expenditures. The city council's policy is that we establish a 5%, and as Mr. Parks indicated, we're about $30 million away from reaching that goal. The 5% is seen as the floor, not the ceiling. And to be in a strong financial shape, the goal should be to exceed that in the future. As a result of these actions, we did experience two downgrades in, if you recall, last year. But if you look in context, as we compare to other major cities, we fall somewhere in the middle in terms of our credit rating. The dangerous thing about where we're at today is that one more downgrade would make it, prohibits us from accessing certain elements of the market. That is a big part of purchasing our debt. And so maintaining our credit record is an important part of ensuring that when we go out to the market for borrowing, that we do so at the lowest credit rate. And of course, all of us have read about the discussion that's happening on a national level regarding the state of the municipal bond market. Some of it, we believe, is inflated and doesn't really reflect the reality that most cities have engaged in. The number of defaults throughout history are very, very minimal, but there is a level of anxiety that is out there, particularly among, you know, your average citizen, who are really the core of those who purchase our bonds. So maintaining this credit rating is critical. Unfortunately, the future, while we've maintained a balanced budget during very difficult times and during the, one of the biggest recessions since the Great Recession, we still continue to face deficits in the future. You've heard it mentioned, the $350 million deficit next fiscal year. This later to FSR reports that because we are seeing some decline in revenue, we already know that the transfer for next year is likely to be less than it is now. We're seeing a slight dip in some of the other revenue. That, that, when the mayor's budget comes out, that deficit could go up anywhere between $30 to $50 million more. And we'll know, have more information in the next few weeks when we get the sales tax receipts from the Christmas holiday, as well as the latest property tax figures. So the question is, what's driving this deficit? If we've reduced the size of the workforce significantly, while we've seen revenues drop, it hasn't been, if you compare it to the last chart, the earlier chart that showed sort of the drop in our revenue, why are we still facing these deficits? And the answer is simply that the cost of maintaining business, the cost of our people, is growing at a much faster rate than revenue. And so there are several elements to that. The first thing is simply the wages that we pay our employees. And we've all, we had a long discussion last year about COLAs that kicked in as a result of moving forward furloughs and layoffs. But this is just to give you an example of what the future lies as it relates to agreed COLAs to 60% of the civilian workforce. In total, our deficit for next, for next year is projected to be, as I indicated, 350. Almost 30% of it comes from employee compensation adjustments. 14% of it comes from civilian pensions. 30% of it comes from fire and police pensions, of which a portion of it increased just in the last six weeks due to two changes. One, in the assumption of the rate of return that fire and police pensions has, and the second is the assumption on the growth of healthcare costs for retirees. 3% increase in workers' comp, 7% in health, and then 14% is that the voters have supported bond measures to build new facilities. We have to budget for the operational costs of those different facilities. This is what, just in relation to the cost of our workforce, how they contribute to the future deficits, and this is, shows the incremental increases. And, you know, the red represents health, the blue represents fire, police pensions, and civilian pensions. On pensions alone, you know, several months ago, we did a Pensions 101 workshop. This reminds us that we're going to reach $1.2 billion pension costs starting in the year 15, 16, which will represent about a third of the general fund at that time. In healthcare, we've seen a 10% increase in healthcare costs in the last 10, every year for the last 10 years, 113% overall, if you look at, just to look back in the last 10 years. And so any efforts we make to actually reduce that adds, brings us, helps us reduce the projected deficit. The action that we did this year with working with labor to increase co-pays, to have for the first time, one bargaining unit actually contribute towards a premium of healthcare costs, all of that helps in mitigating, and we're already starting to see some of that benefit for the next healthcare year, which starts January 1. So the meat of our report really talks about what we recommend we start exploring to get out of this crisis, so that we're not constantly in the state of crisis year after year after year. So we actually start reaching some level of normal that is different from where we are today. And every city, every county, every school district, every state in the country is going through this exact same process. We mentioned in the report what's going on in Chicago and in Costa Mesa and other parts of the country to remind us that we're not alone in this. And one of the things that you've done as a council is that you took action early, two years ago, by not engaging in easy ways out, you know, issuing pension obligation bonds or selling off your meters. You actually began this process of reducing the size of workforce and dealing with these issues, and so we recommend building upon those, that success. So there are four main strategies that we recommend. The first one is responsible management and fiscal practices, and that simply means maintaining a healthy reserve fund, committing to that 5%, and actually adopting a policy that every, for every dollar that we get of one-time revenue, we park half of it towards the reserve fund until we reach that goal. That we find ways to maximize funding and provide flexibility in the funding that we have. We self-impose through ordinances ways to chop up our general fund dollars, and that makes the general fund available less and less. And so what we're recommending is that we engage in the process to review all the ways that we do that, and ask ourselves, is this how we would prioritize our funding, should we have that funding available? And it may be that that's in fact how we would do it. Our priorities would reflect how we separate out money for the arts, or separate out for parking, or separate out for infrastructure. But we're at a point where we need to revisit our assumptions and ask ourselves that question. We recommend consolidating some administrative functions, particularly in human resources and other areas, and strengthening our ways that we manage our assets. And then part of all of this is, even if you were to adopt every single recommendation in here, the reality is, is that we will continue to face a shortfall in the outer years. So ultimately, what is needed is a new revenue source. And so we're asking that you direct the CLA and the CAO's office to come back to you with ways to do so. The second piece is looking at core services. And of course, the way every member of this board, of this council defines core services differently. We are recommending you engage in a very deliberate process of discussing what those core services are, and find ways to reevaluate discretionary programs, consolidate services, and for those things that only we know we have to do, find ways to evaluate how we're doing them, come up with efficiencies, and redesign them to make them more cost-effective. The third area is we were recommending that we look at opportunities to engage in alternative service delivery models. One, in some cases, other people do things better than we do, and we should find opportunities to partner with them to provide better services. And other ways, we could, we could leverage our contributions with a nonprofit or with a private foundation, and actually have the private sector engage to a greater extent to provide a level of service that currently we're providing. The third area is to strengthen our core functions, and so IT is a good example of that, where perhaps we should look at how we could transition our program to a private sector model, because they have the capacity to adapt to changes in technology and bring in latest innovations in a way that perhaps we're limited in. And then the final piece is looking at our workforce itself, looking at those principal drivers that are, that we demonstrated are what's creating the deficits in the first place. So this process includes a continual reduction of the workforce and bringing it to a sustainable level. Setting targets for savings in healthcare and workers' comp. Finding ways to control our pension and retiree healthcare benefits, and we provide two very specific examples of that. Within the next 10 years, realigning our compensation structure so that we're in a range where there isn't so many distortions that exist. And finally, and most importantly, I think, is finding ways to eliminate furloughs through the concessions that we negotiate. Otherwise, as the final chart shows, we will be in a situation like we are this year, where the only way we close our budget is through furloughs. And so if we, if it's in our, if it's our intention to not have furloughs be part of the reality of the city for the next five years, we have to find a ways to negotiate them and work with our partners in labor to do so. So we'll be working with the Budget and Finance Committee and all of you in discussing the various elements of what is being proposed. And of course, the mayor's budget, which gets released in a month from now, will provide you the very specific opportunity to first understand how the mayor responded to the recommendations we made, and also give you a set of tools to then either to support or to come up with an alternative when the budget is being discussed a month from now. Thank you.
Colleagues, I think what's important on page 14 is that these are principles that we'll eventually bring to you to basically vote on as principles for the future of our budget, so that we can say, these are the things we're asking the CLA, CAO to work on, as everything that goes through that sifter for the budget has to meet these principles so that we have a sense of what we're going forward on. The other thing is that we've had a brief discussion on the issue of core responsibilities, where everybody in this room has a different view of what a core responsibility is, and we've asked the CAO and the CLA to meet and begin to discuss whether the charter gives us good guidance as it relates to core, because so many of our functions are in the charter as relates to some of our by ordinance. And so this is another part of the equation that we can then agree on what our core responsibilities are. So these are the things that we will be bringing to you. We'll be having additional meetings in Budget and Finance to talk about these principles, but also we hope to be bringing you some ideas that should be part of next year's budget and get it approved early on so that we can get a full year of savings on those things that have a savings aspect to it, or a more efficient way to run the city by bringing functions together that are of like, activities are not in conflict. So page 20, page 14 is a very important group of principles, just as we started several years ago dealing with our budget policies. It gives the guidance to say, this is the direction that we're going in. And under those four principles... And under those four principles, there are a number of pieces that deal with it that will get far more discussion as we bring them before council. Miguel, also, could we just give a brief overview of, most of our departments have curtailed their spending, and there's a handful that there has been adjustments made as relates to addressing the overages at this time. And also, I think it's be important that although Ms. Buhl is not here, if you could articulate what came out of committee about what her intentions are, about how she will balance the budgets in the future, as opposed to the routine moving money out of reserve fund into balancing departments' budgets, her intent now is to do, require a council action, so that general managers are more accountable for going over budget. Can I comment on that?
Certainly. If you're going back to the third financial status report, on page twenty-two, it enumerates sort of a snapshot of how some of the larger departments are doing as it relates to their own budgets. Of course, the pie chart that we show where we virtually eliminate the deficit for this year is contingent on all departments meeting their budget targets. And so, in this chart, we show where the departments are as a relation to their budgets. And we see that the city attorney, the fire department, and the police department still have some deficits that remain. We are confident that each one of those departments will close on target, but one of the things that the controller has stated is that she intends to inform us early enough in the process if, in fact, it looks like a department will not end in the black by the end of the fiscal year, in which case, what normally happens is that if a department still ends the year with a deficit, the reserve fund is used to mitigate that shortfall, and that happens automatically. What she has now indicated is that she will inform your council well in advance if a department is not on track, and the only way she will actually appropriate any reserve fund dollars to make that department whole is through your action. And so, that is a change in how we manage the budget, and it's a way of protecting the reserve fund and also encouraging departments to maintain a balanced budget this fiscal year.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The LAPD, you mentioned the LAPD over budget and the hiring after July first. I understand a class recently started. Where are we at if you look at the LAPD numbers, including the folks in the police academy, a different phase of the academy?
We could certainly have the police department respond specifically, but it's my understanding that right now, with the new class that was just hired, that there are nine thousand nine, nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine police officers, and there is discussion about an additional class later this year.
So, nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine?
Well, I would rely on the police department's latest figures I was given to this yesterday.
We made this commitment of ninety-nine sixty-three, and we want to hold true to that commitment. Also, with the voters passing the pension modification, it would obviously be better to, if we send a letter out for hiring, your start date would be July first or after July first, but if we add up all the personnel that we have on the streets, detectives, administrative, in the academy, different phases of the academy, sick, IOD, long-term, if we add everybody up, sworn personnel, what's our number today?
Jerry Taylor, Los Angeles Police Department. As of today, we're at nine nine oh four.
Ninety-nine?
Nine thousand nine hundred and four. As of Monday, we will be at nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine, because that's when the forty-five people start in the academy. We expect to lose between now and July first another forty-nine or fifty, which means, actually, probably more like fifty-two or fifty-three. We expect to be down somewhere near ninety-eight, ninety by the end, before July first.
So, if we look at the ones on drop, if we look at the ones that are, obviously, need to retire because of drop, and I look at the blue line with retirements, which have really slowed down, they used to have multiple pages, and they've really, really slowed down, this anticipation of the numbers versus those that have actually put in their papers, or they're coming up to that drop date where the drop five-year ends, are we realistically at nine thousand nine hundred and fifty, would you say, or somewhere in that ballpark, or down, lower than that?
Nine thousand nine hundred and fifty, when?
Pardon me?
When? As of Monday?
Well, as, well, this is the end of March. We have April, May, we got three months.
Right.
If we could slide for three months and get people situated and let them know their start date is after July first, see, it wouldn't bother me to say we're going to hold off with the academy class, yet send the letters out for hiring, but it seems, if you slide under that wire and you're going to get in the old pension system, which obviously the voters, you know, they supported the change, you know, we're talking three months. Is it a critical mass that we have, or can we slide for this particular time, but still go ahead with recruitment, let's say your start date is July first or after?
The instructions, well, first of all, let me tell you what our position would be, but what our instructions were. Obviously, in a perfect world, we'd like to hire to attrition as quickly as we can. The chief of police has stated that to maintain the level of service we have, nine nine six three is the minimum number, that that allows him, through the efficient use of deployment as he has, to put in appropriate number in patrol and still have the appropriate number of special units that we have that's helping to reduce crime on an ongoing basis. In the, so, to get to nine nine six three, we would have to hire another class, certainly at least one class between now, after the class that starts on the twenty-eighth of March, we'd have to hire another class before July first. In the discussions on Monday in the Budget and Finance Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee expressed a view that we should wait till July first to hire the last class, because that would save the city money under the new pension system, which certainly we can do. We will not be at nine nine six three at the end of the year if we do that, because we expect to be somewhere at ninety-eight, ninety or something by the end, by June thirtieth, and you don't want to hire a class of seventy people. It would mean that we'd have to take, it would take us two or three months in next year to get up to nine nine six three again by hiring every month. What it will do by waiting till July first to hire is push more hiring in the front of the year than we would normally want to do, but we'll do it to get back up to nine nine six three. Every month we wait, we lose people. The number I gave you of forty-nine is what we expect based on our personnel department's view of attrition, and we've been pretty right on within a few, is that we expect to lose forty-nine more people after March twenty-eighth. That would get us to, that could...
Normally, they would wait until July first, because there's a cola, if there is a cola, that kicks in, the July first.
That's why the number's so low. It's only about fifteen a month.
Right.
Some of those are drops.
And they're holding back, waiting for July first, so if we would wait, and then, July first or after, the other question is, under the Mird administration, they talked about ten thousand officers, and they said, well, we really don't have ten thousand, but equivalent to, where they gave overtime, cash overtime. Could there be a possibility where to maintain that nine nine six three, there was some cash overtime that could help soften that? So, you actually maintain that? Are you smiling? So, you always talk about...
I'm smiling, because we don't have any money for cash overtime we haven't been given.
Well, I'm talking about if we want to hold true to the nine nine six three, it's either the bodies or equivalent to, because if they're working overtime, then they're out there working.
Here's where we are now. Because of the agreement made on compensatory, compensatory overtime, at four hundred hours, allowing officers to have a bank of four hundred hours, and with the requirement that at two hundred and fifty hours, or the right at two hundred and fifty hours, to make people take time off to keep the bank low.
Right.
Because that bank, somebody's going to have to pay at some point in the future.
Exactly.
We lose the equivalent of about four hundred deployable officers a month. So, I, and I don't think, and I know the particular who probably disagrees with this, but I don't believe that we have, we could, we would have enough cash to generate enough overtime to do what you're suggesting.
To balance that out.
Yes.
Okay, I'll come back with some more. Thank you.
Okay. I'll be here.
Mr. Labons is our next speaker.
Just, Mr. Satana, thank you. On the issue in your report, you talked about, I don't see re-engineering as a term used at all. How much re-engineering do we do in processes? And I know one of the processes I talked about is our trash baskets that overflow as like a volcanic cone right now, which are street services, which would greatly reduce, yet can we re-engineer it to have sanitation, because the cost of that trash coming out of the trash can on the corner of Normandy and Third Street will only enhance the cost of sanitation when it's in the drain stuck.
We are making that recommendation. It's one of the fifty recommendations.
And, uh, street cleaning has a possibility to go from street services to sanitation?
We're recommending that you ask us to study that further for ultimately moving that to the sanitation department.
Right.
In addition to that, we are recommending creating a separate department of sanitation altogether.
Right.
To bring in some of those additional services that are being carried by the other bureaus. This would allow those other bureaus to focus on what their core missions are, so whether it's, uh, the street resurfacing or the other functions that they currently have.
Right, and then also, another motion that I put in, but I think you addressed it, on personnel issues. Our personnel department is a very important function, and the personnel department has a very difficult time as people come and go and move and all of that. Would you pull from departments under two hundred people, or whatever, a hundred and fifty, whatever the number is, small departments, their HR function and put it into personnel?
That is a recommendation. We are recommending moving towards a consolidated human resources department, much like what other jurisdictions are doing throughout the country. It's a much more specialized field than it was twenty years ago, and we are recommending doing that in two phases, looking at a combination of big departments and small departments for the first phase, starting July first, and then expanding it out to the rest of the city in the second phase.
And is any other, in National Cities Today, or whatever magazine comes out that you read, those journals, is any restructuring done in other cities that have had the opportunities to give you fresh ideas? Are you looking at, obviously, those things, but I think we should bring all those to the table. The one I do remember, there was, he's now, I think, the governor of Maryland, but he was the mayor of Baltimore, O'Malley, and I remember reading once in one of those journals how they would bid jobs, straight up, and I think Cleveland did it too, where they would bid jobs, city forces and private forces, to get the best cost for the payer, the taxpayer of the municipality. Do we have any of that function here?
We are recommending strengthening our contracting practices and using managed competition, which is what is, is a way of framing that issue on an ongoing basis, particularly when it comes to one-time revenue. You know, if we receive any amount of one-time revenue, our recommendation is that instead of building up our workforce that will be, that could be paid for out of that one-time revenue.
Right.
We use managed competition instead, bring in a private vendor to do that work, so when that revenue goes away, we're not in the situation where we bring in folks that we can't maintain, creating a scenario where we have to then furlough everybody else to maintain that work.
Right, and I know this is a city from Chatsworth to San Pedro, from Barre Heights to Venice, but are there ways to create neighborhood benefit assessment districts if people want to pay additional services like they do in the business districts? Could we look at those forms? We met with a community this morning in public works, street services, to try to create some of those things, if you could look at that. Thank you for this report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker, followed by Mr. Kretz. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate, and these are the roughest of times, and I just think people need to appreciate the hard work you and your team are doing. Thank you. Okay, five quick questions on the police. Come on over there, my, my great friend and colleague from the eleventh district. Okay, just throwing it out as an idea, okay, and I know the union needs to hear this. You know, when I was in the military, we went up to command sergeant major, and then there were lieutenants and captains and above. Presently, in the police department, a lieutenant is in a bargaining unit, and they get paid for overtime. Is that correct?
Correct.
And do we know if there's a discussion, I know I don't want to talk out of school in closed session, all that kind of stuff, is, has it ever been surfaced the idea that maybe a lieutenant, which is an officer, you know, could be part of the captain part and not get paid for overtime? And how much money would be saved?
Well, I can't answer the question about how much we save right off the top of my head, but what, let me, what bargaining unit they're in is up to them.
I know, I'm saying, I would suggest to the bargaining unit that lieutenants are officers, and that maybe they shouldn't get paid for overtime, or at least should be raised enough to be discussed as part of the discussion when we need to come up with a hundred million plus from the police department when we go into our next budget. We've got to come up with money.
Right now, nobody's getting any real money for overtime. The question is, how big a bank they're building?
That's what I'm talking about, okay? So, can we look into that?
Yeah, we can find out.
And at least in the public forum, have a discussion on that. Okay. I just want to, again, go back to able-bodied officers doing civilian work. Where are we at that number? How many sworn officers who are able-bodied are doing civilian work?
The last number was like eighty-six, of which twenty-nine, I believe, and...
Eighty-six, twenty-nine? Well, could you give us a...
Eighty-six officers doing civilian work, and only twenty-nine of them were not either temporary or long-term light duty.
Okay, Miguel, I'd like a report back on that with the exact numbers on that. Jailers, are we going to be okay thanks to Mr. Smith's generosity this year? We got the jailer issue off the boards. Do we have a plan to deal with that next fiscal year?
We, the chief has assigned eighty-eight officers to the jail on a rotating six-month basis, and this allowed the generosity of Councilman Smith allowed us to remove, I think, twenty-seven from that plan, starting July first. If the funds aren't there, we'll go, we'll go back to the eighty-eight.
Well, we got to go back to that and have a discussion on that one as well. Okay. The mechanics, how about that? How are we on the mechanics, police mechanics?
Very thin. We have in our hiring plan for next year...
Could I have some silence, please?
We're right at the margin, because they leave to go to DWP and other places where they don't have furloughs, and they have, but they feel greater jobs...
Okay, I want to get a report back on that.
In our hiring plan, we have for next year to hire, I think, ten or eleven mechanics, so that we can try to keep up with...
Okay, whatever the story is, the facts will be helpful for us as we get into that phase. The next thing is nine-one-one. Obviously, we discussed about this. Obviously, nine-one-one is core policing business. It is not a joke. It is the number we call when we're in need, and I would obviously like to get more understanding of how we're going to deal with that issue next year.
We, we will do that. We've asked for exemptions from furloughs for the nine-one-one officers. If they were exempted starting April first, only the ones that answered the nine-one-one calls, that's the floor people, we would, it would cost the city about four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to do nine-one-one. We got to find it somewhere. I don't want to be on hold.
No, to not, to not furlough them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
For the rest of this year, only this fiscal year.
I understand. So, we need to figure that one out. The last thing I want is somebody dial nine-one-one, and we can't answer it.
And they're one of the only groups that actually has to be paid cash overtime, so we, in the long run, it might be saving them money, because we'd have a full service, and we have relief people.
Yeah, I like it fleshed out more, because it's too serious for me. And the last thing is, just a comment, I think, you know, we're going to do the April class, the letters went out, that forty-five more people are going to join. There's no way we should do another class this year, fiscal year, so that we can save on what the voters voted on in March, and we should really prepare ahead for July first to July second.
That was what the Budget and Finance Committee...
That's right.
...recommended, and if that's the council's wish, that's how we'll proceed.
Okay, I just want to, because this is a more public room, the lights are on, people can hear us and see us and all that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kretz is our next speaker, then Ms. Ha, and then Mrs. Zine is on cue a second time.
Yeah, I think the first thing I was going to say has already been covered to some degree by Mr. Rosendahl, which is, it strikes me that there can't be anything that has a more direct connection to saving lives than nine-one-one. So, if there's anything in the entire budget that I would say is the absolute first priority is, it is that there'd be no waiting for people answering nine-one-one calls. So, frankly, I don't care what else is happening with this budget, I think tomorrow we should be back at full strength on nine-one-one, and people should not be waiting a second to have those calls answered. So, the, my question to, to the department, to our CAO, is how do we make that happen?
If the city council, however the process is, assuming it's the city council allows us to exempt the people answering the nine-one-one calls, and that, we, and then gives us the four hundred and thirty-one thousand, that will, we'll do it immediately. But what's happened during the year is that the city council, on a number of occasions, has adopted different policies and then told us to find the funds for it. We don't have it. As you heard Monday, we're... As you heard Monday, we're, we're now have a projected deficit of 3 million, I think, 3.4 or something like that, and we're going to have to try to make it up. Everything else that gets piled onto us just increases our burden.
We, we were asked at Budget and Finance to, I tried to find funding to take all of street services off of furloughs, and so in that exercise, we found a number of special, uh, funding sources that, that are very important, uh, but haven't been entirely spent 100%. Um, the only way, as Mr. Parks indicated, if you, if you fund something, you're going to, we need to find another place to cut. Um, and so what remains is really, you know, very limited choices. Uh, there's 1.2 million left in the special events fee subsidy. There's, um, the fire department has about 250,000 left in a special training fund that hasn't been encumbered now, but I'm sure it will be. Um, to, there, in the case of street services, the goal was to try to eliminate them all out of furloughs. It would have been a 1.5 million dollar target. If we expanded furlough days for everybody, that would be, uh, for those who are currently experiencing 26 days for one day, we would save 1.6 million dollars. So our, our options are limited in terms of what we could do, um, beyond, because we, whatever funding we had left, we're using to mitigate the 50 million dollar deficit that we're currently experiencing, and we're still short by 4 million.
Well, if, if there was one thing that we have to resolve, I, I don't care whether we take it from our reserves for this one item, it'd be my last choice, and I'm sure we could find something else to do. You have to bring us back some options, and we have to do this. I think not answering 911 calls is absolutely insane. Um, I have more stuff to discuss, but I'll push my button again, but that one item, I don't care where it comes from. You can't, you can't have life-saving calls not answered, and especially when, when we know that particularly, uh, Spanish-speaking people are getting worse service on emergency, life-saving calls, uh, all those things are just not, not acceptable. There's no way we can do that as a city.
Ms. Hahn is our next speaker.
Thank you. I know this, uh, it more pertains to next fiscal year, but I just wanted to, and I know the neighborhood councils are actually coming in to make their budget suggestions and proposals, and so, uh, I've introduced a motion just to ask you to take a good hard look at their proposals and analyze them and see whether or not, uh, you know, some of them are really worth implementing in terms of efficiency, cost savings, and sort of long-term solutions. Have you had a chance to look at them at all?
Um, no, I have not, but we, we'll make sure. I, I did meet with them a couple of times, as did my staff, so we have a sense of elements of it, but I haven't had a chance. Um, my staff put this together in the context of also putting the budget together, so we'll make sure that that analysis gets done. I think they're presenting today, right?
Uh, or next, next week, I believe.
They're, they're coming, okay.
If I can have some time in council to present their findings.
Okay, so just note that I'm introducing a motion that specifically directs you to, you know, look at them and...
So when they present it, we'll be able to provide you our comments on it.
Okay.
Mr. Dennis P., soon to be roasted, Zine.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Mr. Weston informs me not to talk long on this. Um, enough with the police department for the time being. How about the city attorney's office? Uh, I know that we got a report, civil cases out of 41, I think they won 38, saving the city 700 million dollars. What do we do to strengthen the city attorney's office so they can do their job defending the actions of the city employees on those civil cases where they need to go in and clean up the mess that's created by another department, and we keep on cutting more and more away? How do we solve that? And we've got Mr. Carter here from the city attorney's office, who can also maybe comment on that. Mr. Carter, could you come forward, please?
Uh, Mr. Carter would be able to answer specifically. You know, one of the things that, you know, ultimately, I think we need to look at is shifting, uh, how litigation costs are, are spent, you know? It's much like employees. Currently, when you hire an employee as a general manager, you're not 100% responsible for that employee. You, you cover about 60% of their costs. 40% of it ultimately gets paid for by the general fund through pensions, healthcare, and the variety of other services. Litigation is the same. Litigation is, regardless of where the litigation stems from, which department, um, the cost is dealt with, with the entire general fund. If departments were accountable for their own litigation in terms of, up to a certain threshold, so if I, there was a, a, the employment discrimination case in my office, and I handled it poorly, which resulted from being, you know, a case that could have been resolved immediately, to a case that resulted in maybe a million-dollar lawsuit against the city. If there was a way of spreading that accountability throughout departments, departments would be different, handle those cases different from the onset, and would partner with the city attorney to avoid a, a small case becoming a big case, and engage in a series of corrective actions to eventually learn from those cases. I think ultimately, if we're trying to control litigation costs, which is a very legitimate goal, changing that model will help us get there. Um, the department is certainly at a better place to talk about how to strengthen the department, and so I'll turn to Mr. Carter.
I just want to say that for my nine years here, when we first got here, we'd have civil cases coming before us at the city attorney's office. There wouldn't be a representative from the department that generated that lawsuit, and we finally pounded, pounded, and pounded to get the department there, whether it's a slip and fall or something else, finding an alternate representative. But in the years past, we'd make the, the claim would come, we'd pay it, and how are we going to correct the problem if we don't know, and the department's not even here to defend themselves of the actions? Mr. Carter.
Uh, good morning. William Carter, Chief Deputy City Attorney's Office, Honorable President, Council Members. The, I have in front of me a, uh, top 10 departments with the highest liability payouts. Uh, I won't name the departments, but...
Why don't you go ahead and name them? Start off with the alphabetical.
Uh, the police department is always number one. Uh, currently, as of December 31st, from July 1st of '09, uh, of 10 till December 31st of last year, there's been over, almost 15 million dollars in payouts.
And, are those cases internal, or are those cases external? In other words, internal conflicts or lawsuits from the public?
Those are both, both. Lawsuits that have been brought because of use of force, traffic accidents, maybe employment. Uh, I won't give you the projected number for this year because we're still in the middle of negotiating and resolving cases. Uh, we have Public Works, Bureau of Street Services at 4 million, Transportation at 3 million, Rec and Park at 1.6, Fire at about 600,000, Bureau of Sanitation goes down from there.
What's the lowest?
Lowest is, uh, the Convention Center, which was 30,000 dollars in payouts.
Okay.
Yes, but that was of December 31st of last year. These numbers are actually lower than from the year before. So, uh, the city attorney's office has been working hard to negotiate lower settlements and to try those cases that we feel we can't settle.
And what are they doing for risk management so it doesn't reoccur?
Well, risk management is an obligation of each department. Each department should be sure, they're supposed to come before the Claims Board and the council to make sure that the offending situation, or the, the risk situation has been abated. Uh, I'm not sure if that's happening. It seems to me that we have an awful lot of the same types of incidents. We're trying to deal with the departments on a case-by-case basis to train them to do so, but as Council Member Zine, you mentioned, since July 1st, uh, of last year, our trial teams have had 41 jury trials. We've had favorable verdicts out of 38 of those. In fact, uh, I think some of the former officer defendants that are in this, are here today, just last week, our trial teams fully defended them in federal court, and there was no liability found on the behalf of the police department and no damages awarded. Total savings to the city is over 70 million dollars by our trial teams. That's real money. That's real money that would have had have been paid by the city, because those are the demands made by the plaintiffs who sue us.
And those are your attorneys and not outside council?
These are our attorneys, our lawyers that are working around the clock, and remember, all of our lawyers are furloughed, but the courts aren't furloughed, the juries aren't furloughed, the police aren't furloughed, the criminals aren't furloughed. We have to work every day, and the judges don't accept our excuse that we're furloughed. We have to show up.
So your, your budget is over, uh, according to...
Well, we have a disagreement. We have a major disagreement with the FSR. We, as, I've handed out today materials, uh, a letter dated March 23rd with some attachments. We believe that the, uh, current deficit is overstated by the FSR. We think our final deficit, year-end number, is overstated. We believe if we weren't to, if we weren't to do anything else the rest of the year, our final deficit would be about 1.8 million. That's what we believe, based on our current, uh, track, uh, record on, uh, the budget. You have to remember that this, our office got hit harder than any other public safety department. We got hit 10%. We got hit harder than the police, harder than the fire. And I found it interesting today when you were talking about minimum police numbers. We have to keep a certain number of police officers out there. I never hear you need to keep the same amount of prosecutors. You have, we're part of the same equation. The police are only as good as the prosecutors. The police don't keep criminals in jail, the prosecutors do. You can arrest as many people as you want, you can't hold them. The strongest thing you have in this city against criminals is the complaint that the prosecutor files. That's what holds that person in jail. So every time we get cut, you have to cut a prosecutor. That's what you're doing. And when you're trying to keep a minimum number of police officers, you've got to factor prosecutors into it. That's just common sense, and you're not, you, I, we're asking you to think about that. Now, having said that, we also have the civil component of the office, which you've talked about. There were guidelines set last year, revenue targets for collections, subrogation, consumer environmental penalties. We are hitting all of our targets. You, Council President and others asked us, would you, uh, accept these targets, collection, subrogation, penalties? We are hitting our targets. We will use those numbers to balance our budget. And we're doing that also with furloughs, we're doing it with transferring to proprietaries, we're doing everything we can to balance our budget.
Okay. Miguel.
Uh, Mr. Rosendahl, we, we have this dance every FSR, and I think that's why we asked the controller to issue, um, the, her report, where she will ultimately be the arbitrator of, of what, what the deficits are. I'm, I'm very hopeful then, in fact, that the city attorney will be able to meet his budget, uh, and ultimately, the controller who controls our, our bank account will, will give us that final indication, um, as we move forward in the rest of the fiscal year.
And if I could add, Melissa Krantz, Office of the CAO, uh, one of the discrepancies between our office's report and the city attorney's reported deficit is the assumption of realizing some of the operational plan solutions, and, uh, to that end, uh, there is a, an recommendation to appropriate about 1.8 million to City Attorney's 10-10 account from the Consumer Protection Litigation Fund. Uh, in the operational plan, there's about 4.2 million expected. Of course, we can't recommend appropriations until that money is there.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just another LAPD question, rather quickly, I'd like to ask, um, Jerry. Um, it has to do with, with chargeback and, and payment. Uh, when, when we provide our LAPD service to LAUSD police, uh, to the port police, and to the airport police on booking and housing suspects and all that, do we get reimbursed from those three groups, and how much money might we be looking at that we should get reimbursed?
I, I'd have to do it, uh, I know we don't get reimbursed from the port or the airport. I don't believe, I'd have to check with USC, I don't believe we do. Um, and it's, but it's not that many people.
And the Highway Patrol?
Uh, the Highway Patrol usually doesn't book them with us, they go right to the sheriffs.
Okay, who, because I'd like to report back, because I think the airport should pay for its own issues, and so should the harbor, the proprietary departments, and LAUSD. I've heard a figure as much as 84 million with, with LAUSD?
No, no. Um, our...
Total?
Our booking expenses, uh, with transportation and booking fees is under 5 million dollars. So I can't imagine how it could be that high.
All right, great.
And of that percentage, I would guarantee you it's in the single digits of people from the places you're talking about. It's probably under 5, it's probably in the 2%, 3% range, which would be extra nothing.
Whatever it is, it, it could help us, if the proprietary...
Well, the problem is, one of the problems we've had, and it would, this has come up in the past, how do we collect? Because right now, we're trying, we, because of the way the city's doing things and consolidating, for example, we get about 300-plus thousand a year out of drunk driving fines, driving under influence.
Yeah.
The Office of Finance used to do that. Now they're requiring us to do it, so we have to try to figure out a way how we can set up a collection system. So just finding a place to collect money is only one part of the problem, then we have to find people to collect it for us. So it's just, I just want to say, there may be something there, but it's just not, it's not as easy as it always appears at first place.
Well, if there's something there, I'd love to get it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Kretz.
Yes, uh, my, my other question is about, uh, police staffing. I know we've had this, this, we've discussed this a little bit. We, we have a magic number, 9963. Has there been an analysis? Is there something magical about that? If we decide to cut a class and, and establish a level that was 50 officers lower, you would tell us the sky is falling, as we kind of already have heard. Um, if we cut it 10 officers and made it 9953, I don't know if we'd get the same response. Where, is there any kind of analysis that has told us that this number is a magical number, and this is a magical level of deployment?
The Chief of Police has stated that 9963 is a number, he, a minimum number, he believes, that will allow us to keep providing the service we have, which is a reduction in, uh, crime across the board. Uh, have we analyzed what happens if it's 9962? No. Uh, would I say if it's 9900 that the sky is falling? That's not the way I talk. But what I would say is that it will impinge upon some of the things we're doing, because it's just less people to apply to those places. But right now, you have to understand that what the chief has done in the last, a little over a year that he's been chief, he has moved 400 people out of administrative and special units back into patrol, to beef up the patrol units. He has streamlined the operations to try to make sure that every available, every able-bodied police officer is doing the kind of police work that he or she should be doing. Anytime you start removing people from that deployment, and we've lost 400 a month because of the overtime agreement, anytime you keep adding to that, you, as, well, he's gone, but as the Chief Administrator Officer says, when you take from one place, it's going to impact some other place. Can I give you a one-to-one? No, but can I, I can just tell you that there will be some units that will suffer with the less people. That's what we're going through right now. The less people we have, the less specialized units we can have. That includes, um, and that also requires us to, to do different things. In the past, the, the police department, when there was a traffic accident, a police officer showed up to take a report. Not anymore. In the past, when there was a burglary, somebody would show up right away. We don't do that anymore. I don't want us to be in the position where we can't investigate burglaries and autothefts because we have to put people in all the homicide and violent crime units. That's a long answer to your question. It's not one-to-one, but it is, the less people we have, the less service we can provide.
Right, and intuitively, that's true, but I suspect if we had 200 more officers, we'd probably be saying exactly the same thing. If we had, well, a couple hundred fewer officers, we'd probably be saying the same thing. Is, is there a real point where we actually face some real difficulties? I know that's not ideal, but we have cut overtime dramatically, um, and there's, there's, uh, you know, not a person here that doesn't think our, our chief has done an amazing job, but the fact is, we've cut overtime dramatically, we've cut that deployment, and we've found a way to keep crime down. So the question is, could we, could we cut 10 officers, and would the people of Los Angeles actually know the difference? Where, where is...
I'm going to open my district.
Do, do we know a line where we actually have a sense that people would notice the difference? And if you tell me that if we cut 10 officers and we cut 1,000th of 1% of the force, that any, any practical difference would be there, and we couldn't change a deployment to cover it over, I'd find it hard to believe. So I'd like to know that we've done some real analysis, and that we actually know that 9963 is really a number that we can't go below, um, or, or whether we could deal with, with budgeting of this department in a way that other cities like Long Beach do, where they've decided they are going to keep the same percentage... like Long Beach do, where they've decided they are going to keep the same percentage for their police department, but if they continue to fund it at exactly the same level and keep their deployment, as a council member there has told me, they become the police department of Long Beach, and not the city, as we keep cutting every other service. So you know what I'm getting at, is can we in some way do some analysis to really figure out whether the police department can take a hit along with everybody else? Or whether that one budget has to be sacrosanct while we cut other highly important services?
Let me just answer it in a number of ways. First of all, if we wanted to have a police department that really should be fully staffed, we'd have 12,000, 12,500.
Right, and a bankrupt city, we all know we can't do that.
Second thing is, the number 9963 was arrived at after doing an analysis of deployment, where we were, where people were. Based on the production the department was achieving, the reduction in crime that has gone down in Los Angeles even when crime in other cities has gone up. The question of whether you, asking us to talk about one police officer, 10 police officers, is the kind of things we lawyers do, where we want to make a point in our argument. And you've made the point that, yes, there are numbers you can play with. The Chief of Police, and I know the mayor, honestly believes that 9963 is a minimum. Anytime you start going below that, which we have done, we have to move people around to make up for that. That's the best answer I can give you, and the best answer to that, the best corollary to that is, with this number, we have been able to achieve substantial reductions in crime. The City Council is the policymakers, that's something you have to decide as to what are the priorities for the city in setting your budget. Right now, we're about 25% of the general fund budget and 30% of the general fund people. Keeping us at 9963 doesn't make us the police department of, the city, the police department of Los Angeles. We are at 25%. Our budget for next year will probably be, will be in the same range. I know what my instructions have been from everybody. So I think the best answer I can give you is 9963 is the best estimate we can give to keep the police department performing the way it is.
Well, could, could we not take a different approach? Which would be to gradually reduce by attrition, and if we found that our deployment was too low, to increase while we were increasing by training and hiring new officers, to fill that in with overtime as we have. So to test the waters, as it were, because it is possible, since we have had a reduction in deployment and maintained incredible level of success in fighting crime, that 9,700 might be able to do the job virtually as well, and that there is a point where we start to see a difference. And we don't know that 9963 is it. So could we, for the purposes of a budget that is so deeply in debt, experiment with that? And slowly nip at the edges and see whether, whether we have any real difference?
If you tried to do it that way, in my opinion, it would end up costing more, because overtime is more expensive than having a police officer, because you have to pay time and a half.
Well, not with pension costs and all the other costs, as we know, it's probably pretty much of a wash.
And second of all, it takes a while to train officers, and we can't train classes of hundreds. That's what they, in one of the findings of the Rampart, I didn't know what it was called, I think it was called Rampart Incident Report, that Chief Parks did, one of the findings was that when you have these large classes and you hire a whole bunch of people at one time, you can get in trouble. Because they're not getting the individual.
Right, and that's not what I'm suggesting. As you know, I'm suggesting that you very slowly trip down, and if you see, if you see you start to run into problems, you gradually fill it in with overtime, and then you gradually rehire and staff.
We've debated this for a while, it's five, six minutes over, so Mr. Keretz, if you want to push your button again, please.
Well, just a thought, as we look towards our budget for July 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'd like to ask Mr. Carter to come forward again, if I could, and then Miguel, maybe you could help me sort, sort this out. Where it relates to your department collecting uncollectible debt, or, and you reference a target of $3 million or what have you, how did we come up with the $3 million figure? Was that?
That was a number that was negotiated before this office, this administration took office. That has been in effect for at least a couple of years. In each budget that I saw, was a recommendation that a revenue target number of $3 million for collections. Last year, we hit about 3.5 million. This year, we'll probably hit over 4 million, maybe more. Last week, we had a victory of about 10 million. The issue now is to collect it, and that was in response, actually, to a CIO report that came out in October of 2009, in our discussions with President Garcetti, that said we should incentivize the departments, and we said one of those areas is certainly collections. We've transferred five people in the collections, and in response to the CIO and the council, our attorneys are working very hard to hit that $3 million number, and when we hit that number, we anticipate that we will get some credit for that.
Mr. Santana, I remember, I don't know if it was several months ago or last year, we were talking about this large amount of uncollectible, I can't remember the figure, it was Councilmember Alacon that said, and I think Ms. Hahn as well. So I guess my question is, in my view, if the public, or somebody that owes us some money, got a letter from the firm of Keretz, Wesson, and Kocorian, saying, "Pay up," that they might take it and just throw it in the trash. But if they got a letter from the City Attorney's Office, you know, saying, "We're going to sue you," if that's, do you view that as a more effective way? If so, then if there hasn't been discussions, there should be serious discussions about increasing the CA, the City Attorney's Office ability to collect these funds. I met with Carmen about a month ago, and he said to me, "You should let me be your bill collector." So I'm just curious as to what you think on that. I would love to come up with at least some kind of pilot program that would afford them the opportunity to go out and bring in the money that's due us.
I think the concept's a good one. I think the goal here is, our collection system goes through different processes, and ultimately, they, some of them end up in the City Attorney's Office for that purpose. I think what we don't do a good job as a city is making sure we capture the collections at the front end, and so the ones that the City Attorney is going after are really the ones where that letter will make the biggest impact. And so as part of this issue, there was a separate report that was issued, if you remember, from the Core Committee, which was established simply to look at that one issue. And an IG type of position for that goal, to streamline that process, so that every piece of the, you know, every, every piece of that collection gets handled at the appropriate place, and ultimately creates a person whose sole purpose is to advocate for the streamlining of that effort. And so the City Attorney is, you're right, I mean, that's, when I was down the street, you know, we saw that in child support, right? A letter from, often from the DA, would make that, you know, it would go from the bottom of the pile to the top of the pile, and I think the same is true here at the city.
And the only thing, and then I will, I will sit down. I'd like to see or discussion where it relates to maybe their involvement in the front end. Because I think if you immediately, you know, go after the individuals that owe us money, and that if they're involved, they're going to recognize that the City of Los Angeles is serious. Now, I don't know what agencies we use or how that works, but I do think that there are some things that, that the City Attorney's Office has been recommending that might bring in more revenue, and I would like to really see us get involved with those kinds of things. I'm really glad that we're going to have serious discussions about consolidations of departments, and maybe things like, maybe we're not good at running golf courses, maybe we're not good at running the convention center. And I mean, so let's, I really want to see what those figures are, but where it relates to tax collection, I would be really, I think this, this council would be very open to at least some kind of pilot program, and if our City Attorney's Office can bring in more money, then maybe they should be our bill collector.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson, you're only 2:44 over, appreciate that. Mr. Cardenas. It was less than 2:44, yes, it was.
You've got five more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important that we use this opportunity to not only talk about this year's budget, but also warn ourselves as a body, as policymakers, that we're really charged with setting the budget for the City of Los Angeles, right here in these chambers. And I believe that too much has been overemphasized from many corners of this city, in that quality public safety lies in 9,963 officers. First of all, I've asked time and time again for somebody to please let me know where the 9,963 number comes from, and how that particular figure is so exact. And I still haven't had an answer. Hopefully during the future budget process for next year, we'll actually be able to understand why that magical number is so important. But at the same time, I think it's important for us to understand and remind ourselves that when it comes to public safety, that's an effort by an entire team of folks. Yes, we need, at the core of that, is our police officers. But as we heard earlier from our police service representatives, such as our 9/11 operators, we heard that they're part of that public safety as well. It's one thing to make sure that an officer shows up on the scene whenever something like a shooting has occurred, but at that moment, once a shooting has occurred and there's blood spilled, then it's just as critical for public safety, especially the safety and the life of that particular individual, or individuals whose blood is spilling, that we actually have the resources, and we're fortifying ourselves with the ability to not waste any time whatsoever to get to that individual or those individuals and save their lives. So I think it's really important for us to understand that we need to appreciate and respect the efforts and the work that's being done within the police department, because it's not a science per se, and it's not magic as to how a police department can remain effective and highly functional. But at the same time, when we're actually cutting budgets all over the City of Los Angeles, it's important for us to understand that we can't leave any department, we can't leave any department without them having to justify every single position, every single dollar that we, we fortify them with. The police department doesn't get to choose how many positions they have. It's the City Council of Los Angeles, every year during the budget process, that gets to decide how many positions they have in sworn officers, and also how many positions they have in non-s sworn officers, civilian positions, and all the related support issues that go with any particular department. So I just wanted to remind ourselves, as the policymakers of the budget of the City of Los Angeles, that it's really important that we not ignore, that we actually require every single department to justify every single position. And with all due respect, I think that we've been very, very light on the police department, and it's not their fault that if we're light on them, then they don't have to give us the kinds of details that every other department has to fight for. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, I will be brief. Thank you, colleagues, for the good and vigorous discussion, but thank you to our CIO for two things. Today, we're passing, you know, a plan that essentially gets us through the rest of the year, the two months with the adjustments we have to make as we go along. And because of the good work of this council, and the CIO, and the mayor, we were able to make cuts in previous months that get us close to being there. This will finish that for the year. What we aren't going to get in as deep today, and we've actually scheduled, I think, for another week, beginning hopefully next week, is the four pillars of what the CIO says is sustainability for the next three years. For anybody who is looking at the City of Los Angeles and says, "Are they just reacting?" I would say, no, we've actually been acting pretty consistently, and we've asked our CIO, who's produced a very impressive route forward, something that, you know, the CIO works for both the mayor and the council, when you look for an overall plan, it has to come out of the CIO's office, as we help guide that and refine that plan. That is something that I think should be impressive, whether it's for our bond raiders or whether it's for our constituents. In the meantime, they've been very involved in our labor negotiations as well. I mean, to be blunt, folks, we can do a lot on our service side, depending on what sort of negotiations and settlement we have on our labor contracts. And I look forward to continuing that path, and thank the CIO for the progress that we've made in those areas. And, you know, we can get to a place where we both have to make new cuts, but we might be able to move completely away from furloughs for everybody, not just for 911 operators, not just for those critical positions. And I know that's what we have to do, because we all know that furloughs are not a permanent fix, they are not structural, we cannot run a city sometimes open and sometimes not. What we can do is make the hard decisions about what core things the city should do and should not be doing. And that's what we're going to have to all do still. And I think the work that your analysts did in each department, for each of us who chair different committees that oversee those departments, you need to really dig into those and be the leader. Be the leader for, you know, cultural affairs, be the leader for rec and parks, be the leader for transportation, be the leader of public works, be the leader in planning, and determine what it is that we can do so that we do have the core of what the city is about sustained. And what we've done is we've kind of lopped off everybody, so the things that produce revenue, aren't producing them as well as they can, things that might be secondary or tertiary responsibilities, we're still doing, even though we can't afford to. So let's finish this year, plug this hole, move this forward. I'm really glad there's a consensus and some understanding, we can do things intelligently, finally, in the police department on this stuff, and I don't mean that the police department hasn't been intelligent, we've just reduced it usually to this either-or debate that I think we get passed, or the beginning of it today. We need to continue to look at those responsibilities and those areas where we can get more revenues, whether it's the City Attorney's Office, the Office of Finance, and give those resources to make sure our collections and everything else do move forward. We can't just keep saying that. And some of us are working very hard to make sure that that happens, that the recommendations of the Core Commission, for instance, are enacted, so that we can get that. And then finally, I really want to appreciate, I think, when people have heard silence out there in terms of our labor relations, it's because we're talking. And that reflects the way that it should be, the way that we get to, you know, it's a lot of fireworks, and I know our friends in the Fourth Estate don't like it as much, and some people in interest groups don't like it as much, and we're not fighting. When Schwarzenegger fought up in Sacramento with his public safety unions, it created a lot of good headlines, and at the end of the day, guess what? They got to the same place we negotiated and passed overwhelmingly by the voters in Measure G. We can do better, and I think we have a better way of doing business here, and hopefully we'll make some good progress in the days to come there. Because at the end of the day, for, whether it's the street services, folks, and thank you, Mr. Ruzar, for working together with me on that, whether it is the 911 operators, there is a way that we can do that. It isn't, by the way, with no concessions, which I did here today, like, please exempt us from furloughs and all concessions. We all have tightened our belts, we've all given something, but we do that because we believe in the service, we believe in what we do, we believe in the mission of ultimately serving the people of L.A., and this is a good way forward, and I look forward to Mr. Parks helping guide the discussion on those core pieces of the department, working with the CIO to do the same things, that's what our budget deliberation should focus on once and for all, and make those final cuts and those decisions that will guide us into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. LaBonge, for the second time.
Eric, for your help in all things, appreciate that. I just wanted to stand, I support what Mr. Wesson said about the City Attorney, I think we should really look at that. I also think if a City Attorney's representative here, a City Controller's representative should be here, as well as a mayor's representative should be here at the table, because it's all a team. What they're talking about in Washington, what they're not doing, is trying to bring everybody together, but everybody's not necessarily together, so in these coming weeks and months, maybe we could be together. But I appreciate what Mr. Carter said, because I think our City Attorney could extradite an effort that would be successful in a way that we want to see. No disrespect to the Office of Finance, or whatever's going on before. And we have asked for Office of Finance and Treasurer to maybe be combined. Maybe that could be, we could look at some of these things, how they could work. If the City Coach's Office could do more in a way to help information spread to the people, let's look at that effort as well. I also want to say to the fine representative of the Fifth District, it starts with public safety. And I think if we do upset public safety, we will not be successful. When you mentioned the Rampart report, Mr. Chalif, when you mentioned the Rampart report, that was a very, very strong thought about how, when the previous administration, Mr. Riordan, who I love, but he wanted to hire 1,000 officers today, and we hired 1,000 officers, but a few of those And we hired 1,000 officers, but a few of those officers weren't representative of what the police department would be, and we got off course. So I think when you have that smaller unit hire, it may be more sophisticated, make sure they're ready to do the job. Everybody loved that one officer who caused all that trouble because he could hop that six-foot outfield fence at Crystal Springs. That's what really turned him on, what an athlete that guy was, but he didn't have the character to be LAPD. I also wanted to say too, right now, the police department in our area, Mr. Carruthers, is looking in the west bureau to combine units if it makes more sense, which is, instead of having every division have a unit, they're going to go bureau to save money. They're doing thinking in there, and that helps us as we go forward. Same looking at traffic and some other issues. So everything's on the table, but I think we need everybody in the room, including managers. And one thing over the city attorney, if I could ask for a quick question here, I'm worried, and I like that number, and Mr. Zine, you asked the question to get the top 10 lists of what it is, I was impressed when it's so much lower than the previous administration of the city attorney. That shows that this city attorney is working aggressively as public lawyers and not hiring outside counsel to do it. Small thing, it starts with public safety, public works, other issues which we have, not in our control, public health, public education, but on public work, street lighting, a number of street lighting issues. When there's an issue in the dark, sometimes we get a claim against us. I just want to make sure, when there's an issue of bad roadways, we get a claim against us. I'm just putting a big plug in for public works to try to find a way, because if rain weakens asphalt, asphalt creates potholes, potholes create problems, it's very basic. But on the issue of going after in a firm way, I want to be a fine city, but not a fine city that they give fines to everybody, but a fine city like a clean city. That being said, how would you propose to be more effective in collecting outstanding debt and other issues?
Well, I think the first thing that has to happen is a realistic assessment of what the outstanding debt is. I've heard numbers from 200 to 400 million dollars. It's not that high, it's not that high. I think there's a difference between the assessed value and then the audited value. In my discussions with the office of finance, which have been very cordial, and I have to give a great support, acknowledge the great support that the office of finance has provided to the city attorney's office, we work very closely with them. In my discussions with them, and I think they would confirm, that the outstanding debt that we think we could actually collect is probably somewhere between 85 and 90 million. Because a lot of this, I think that's it, I mean, that's from my, correct. But I think there has to be, I think there has to be a realistic assessment of what we can collect. A lot of that debt could be from people who wrote bad checks, small amounts, people you'll never be able to collect from. What we have to do is focus our sights on the realistic amount of money we can, we can collect and do it in an efficient way. As I've heard some of the council members say, and I fully support that, is we have to get the debt sooner. We have to get to that debt sooner, within not months or years, it has to be weeks. By the time we understand and believe that we're not going to get that payment, we have to get on it right away so we can attach or put a lien on that debt and then take appropriate legal action. And I agree, a letter from the city attorney's office may get to the front or the top of the pile of bills to be paid. We've, it's not glamorous, it's not the kind of things you typically think a prosecution office wants to do, but my city attorney has made collections one of his top priorities. We're collecting as much as we can, and workers' comp, we're doing as much as we can. I think we can reduce a lot of debt if we can catch these people that are submitting false workers' comp claims. You know, we don't even talk about those cases, we have about 10,000 of those cases. But I think the sooner we get the debt in-house, the sooner, the faster we can streamline the cases and get to the debtors, the sooner we can collect that money.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And there's a variety of things, whether it's the police department, the fire department, on the issue of public safety and that teamwork effort on this issue here. I also want to say this too, because I say it in public meetings, the tragedy that happened in, the natural tragedy in Japan will come to Los Angeles, and our preparedness and our apparatus, whether it's wrecked parks for housing when there's a disaster, all the other things that take place there, we have to make sure we look at. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. CIO and staff for this.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. Mr. Kocorian, for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to weigh in and make one comment on this issue of collections. I think Mr. Weston and others have made the very important point about our ability to recover more in what is owed to the city if we provide the city attorney with the ability to do that earlier on. But I want to also add that there's another value to that, and that is that it focuses us more on our core functions. When there are other departments in the city, the fire department and countless other departments that are devoting resources to the collection of debts, that's taking time and energy away from that department's core function, when that in fact would more properly be done in a department that would be more appropriate to debt collection. So I think Mr. Weston's point is a very important one, and I'd like to see, I'd like to see us have a much more robust discussion about this with the city attorney's specific recommendations and also the CIO's recommendations about how we can consolidate those functions and create efficiencies, not just in the collection process itself, but also in taking those functions away from other departments where they're currently eating up human and financial resources.
Thank you, Mr. Korian. Ms. Hahn.
I'll speak for Ms. Hahn, she's coming in this door in just a moment, right here. Could you please hold the door, Sergeant, for Ms. Hahn? You got it, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge.
Thank, I'd love it.
We can go to Mr. Parks, but he's not there. There he is. Mr. Parks, you want to go ahead or do you want to wait for Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr.
Go ahead, Mr. Parks, we'll come back to Ms. Hahn.
Let me just, I hopefully give everybody a little insight about collections over the last 10 years. At one time, collections were in the city attorney's office. And because they were not a priority, they were moved to the office of finance because we weren't collecting. Since that has occurred, the office of finance has collected and they've gone ongoing 400 to 440 million dollars a year. The weakness of the system over time has been where executive order number five by the mayor has been ignored by departments. They're supposed to turn over, they're supposed to bill people and then turn it over within 60 days to office of finance. We've expanded the number of primary and secondary collection agencies to collect that money. When it comes back from those collection agencies from the secondary, there's only two choices, you either sell the debt because it's exhausted, or you can go to the city attorney for the issue of criminal. The other issue this council has approved is giving the office of finance the ability to put liens against people's property early on. The office of finance also uses letters from the city attorney and applying that to get pressure on people to pay. So as we move forward, the last piece of the puzzle that the council approved was dealing with a collections czar that was going to be the eyes and ears of everyone to determine what the collection. So those are things that we've approved and moved forward on, and I would hope that as we move forward, that we continue to see what the benefit of those collections have been. And so, again, and also the office of finance has the ability to then do the issue of having amnesty programs if people haven't paid. And then with the upcoming discussion about merging finance and treasurer, there'll be even some more benefit as it relates to dealing with our whole financial system. So these are things that have occurred over the last 10 years that have incrementally put the city of L.A. in a position to be far more adept at collecting money. Clearly, we saw several years ago from a couple of comptroller audits, that the amount of money that was on the table was way over-exaggerated. We found out on paramedic building, much of that that was caused, restated as being owed, was not even collectible. We also found in DOT that the issues dealing with the cost of collections were cumulative figures on loss of revenue that was, because we historically have collected on citations, somewhere in the neighborhood of 80 to 85 percent of the revenue on citations. So that 15 percent, if you collectively look at that over 10 years, it looks like a lot of money. Much of it is uncollectible because people have re-registered their vehicles and a variety of other things. So again, we have to know what the real figures are, we need to make sure the departments get those dollars, those invoices into finance. Finance with their, I think we're up to about seven or eight companies that are doing collections for the city, and they're on contingency on what they can raise. The new implementation of the liens by finance will certainly serve additional emphasis. And then the final part is, once we get the collections czar on board, that's a set of eyes that all of us can depend on. So those are things that we've done over the last eight years I've been here, and before that, there was many other issues. But again, realize that collections used to be in the city attorney's office in other administrations, and it was taken away because it fell so low on the priority list that you collected barely nothing. And so I'd hope that we can continue the discussions and look at these issues, but let's not forget what we put in place incrementally that has shown some great benefit to the city, and the number of dollars that are coming in is not by accident. It also gives the office of finance the ability that a high, a pretty good percentage of the money they collect are dollars in which they roll their sleeves up and get into the city as opposed to those who just comply naturally by paying their bills. So a pretty good percentage comes from them digging, from audits, and finding ways to get money in. And the amnesty programs over the last several years have been very beneficial to get money into the system. And so I would hope that as we move forward, a lot of these discussions will be held, and we'd all invite, we'd invite you to come to Budget and Finance, and we have these special meetings on these four pillars that we'll be bringing to the council as principles. We also ask you to come to the committees when we start talking about these 50 suggestions on reorganization, mergers, different view as to what our core responsibilities are, and so that we can have a collective interest once it gets to council, so that we clearly have a platform to work from. At the same time, budget deliberation start in mid-April, and so hopefully many of these things will be addressed as we move forward because it's absolutely critical that we not only keep this current year in the level of solvency, and one thing I don't think Miguel mentioned, we're down to about $4 million as a shortfall to date. But if revenues continue to recede, we'll be back here talking about additional cuts before June 30. And whatever we don't solve this year by June 30, it will certainly be an issue that we have to solve after July 1. And that's why it's important that we get so many of these things done before June 30. And we hope also that we get the ordinances that are in play, because I think in this report alone, there's at least $2 to $3 million of lost revenue due to the lack of having ordinances in place to collect the money on the date that was proposed, or that we have not gotten the ordinance yet. So those are things also that could bring significant revenue in, because after actions by the council, those ordinance implemented. So I'd ask that we move this report as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, and that we get prepared for a lot of discussion on financial issues over the next month or two.
Mr. Smith, for the first time.
No, no, no.
Oh, Ms. Hahn, well, he's up and you were there, but now you're the second, Mr. Rosenthal's third, but go ahead, Ms. Hahn, and then we'll go to Mr. Smith.
No, 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 protocol. Okay.
Ms. Hahn, and then we'll go to Mr. Smith, then we'll go to Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, I think the city attorney, Bill, and first of all, I agree, if the city attorney wants to help us with debt collection, I say absolutely. Zero from zero is zero, we don't have it now, we may not have it then, but we haven't lost anything. And if the city attorney really wants to take that on, I think you're right. And by the time it gets to your office, it's too late. This is about collecting that money upfront as soon as possible, and I think a strong letter from our city attorney could make a difference. We don't know, but I am 100% behind that, I don't know if we need to make a motion or a recommendation or what, but, you know, I think that is something that I am completely behind. You know, the other thing I was, when I was listening to you talk about, and by the way, you're right, Bill, about, you know, we're so insistent on protecting our firefighters and our police officers in terms of public safety, but our prosecutors are as much a part of that formula as anything. And neighborhood prosecutors, by the way, I'm a huge fan of, and I wasn't in the very beginning, and I wasn't sure why we were spending extra money for neighborhood prosecutors. But neighborhood prosecutors, along with senior lead officers in LAPD, are the ones that actually can prevent crime and create neighborhoods where there's a better quality of life. It's the broken window syndrome, as far as I'm concerned, with neighborhood prosecutors. So I don't know how much of your budget has been taken away from the neighborhood prosecutor problem, but I think that's a big issue for the city, you can answer that. And then also, I was going to ask you, in terms of our settlement and liability, how much of that under, I don't know if it was street services, is slip and falls, of people tripping and falling on our sidewalks?
I would say that's the vast majority.
Yeah.
Slip and fall.
And that was about $4 million a year, I think, in, in street services, you know.
Well, that wasn't a year, that was the first six months.
It was $4 million. So possibly $8 million, $10 million a year.
I would say, it could be in the $10 million.
$10 million a year. And, you know, since I've been here on the council's 10 years now, I'm sure that's a pretty consistent figure. So we're talking just since I've been here, about $100 million that's gone to settle trip and falls. This has been frustrating for me, colleagues, and I know it has for a lot of people. And I remember when Wendy Grill was sitting here, we, I believe, we introduced a motion asking for an analysis of, just specifically, trip and falls, and wouldn't we be better off fixing our sidewalks as opposed to continuing this, you know, liability that we have month after month, year after year? I was frustrated this year, many of you heard me on the signal, at the Five Points corner of Harbor City and San Pedro, where the city attorney, you know, was talking about the payouts that we have paid for that one intersection, and what conversations we were having between city attorney, LAPD, DOT, and to solve these problems. I guess, Miguel, for me, what are we doing going forward to really, once and for all, have a good, it's almost about what is our core services, yeah, what are we really good at, yeah, but how are we going to change this formula that keeps coming back year after year, where seems to me some upfront fixes of these problems could certainly, in the long run, reduce the settlements that we're paying out for these issues? And I know, the city attorney knows these figures, LAPD knows where the traffic problems are or accidents waiting to happen, you know, DOT knows where we should be placing different traffic calming issues or signals, doesn't seem like it hits us until we're in closed session and we're paying out a settlement. To me, again, the structural deficit is one thing, this liability deficit is something else that just keeps growing, and I don't know, it's going to be about where do you find the money? But seems to me this is one of those things where, you know, penny wise, but we're being pound foolish, and we're not solving these problems. The sidewalks is the biggest issue to me. Not only is it a quality of life issue for every single neighborhood, but it is a huge liability for us. We know it is, we pay the settlements out, when are we going to look at that? And wouldn't we have rather spent $100 million in the 10 years that I've been on this council for fixing sidewalks as opposed to continuing this? So, Bill, if you want to speak to neighborhood prosecutors.
Thank you.
And then, Miguel, if you could give me a sense on, as we move forward to talk about a report on our core mission and our core values and what we're good at, where's that report that really finally lays out, you know, here's some places where, you know, we should be investing upfront to prevent this continual, you know, road, rocky road, broken road, to these incredible payouts for the same thing over and over again? Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you for your extra time.
You have, you had two minutes and 37 seconds extra.
That was less than Paul Carruthers.
Just to achieve parity with your colleagues, both gender parity, and so now we're going to let them answer, yes.
I like, I like when the woman is in the president.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you. With respect to sidewalks, I know council member Parks has much more information on that than I do. He and our office have talked about this issue. I know he's been spearheading a proposal to try to resolve some of those issues, maybe some liability issues, transference of some liability issues from the city to other entities. That would, I think, would go a long way if we could accomplish that. But with respect to sidewalks, trip and fall cases, it's a risk management issue, and I think it gets down to the city's priorities. What are the core priorities? Sidewalks or street services? The city has a lot of sidewalks and many hundreds, if not thousands, of miles. But when there's a claims or a settlement of a claim, the department managers are supposed to make sure that that situation is corrected. Hopefully, that can be Hopefully that can be done. Now, we may not be in the, in the budget times to do this, but Mr. Santana has, and I have talked about this and I know from the county, sometimes they charge back to the departments. If you have a liability, then you're going to get charged back to that department until you fix that problem and that's one way to incentivize them to fix the problem. Whether or not we can do that in this environment, I'm not sure, but that's certainly something that you should think about. With respect to collections, we do have, Mr. Kristofal here, I didn't want to speak for her program, but we've been working very closely with her. I know that collections usually collects about 80% of what's owed to the city, it's that 20% that is very difficult to collect. We've been working with Office of Finance to try to come up with ways to speed them along, recently there was a lean program established with collections, Office of Finance, but still, it's not the city attorney wants to take over the world here. It used to be in our office, pieces were given away, I'm not sure why that happened, it happened before we got here, we think it's an important component of our office, it's a top priority. Neighborhood prosecutors, we've lost over 100 prosecutors since July 1st of 2009 because when our office gets cut, we have to shift them, we have to get, we have to reduce the prosecutors and put them on the criminal side to defend the city. We are down to probably 20, up to 40, and we have to maintain neighborhood prosecutors because we have resolution authorities, we have requirements, so we're maintaining that plus a little bit. With respect to the other risk management issues, I'll defer to Mr. Santana.
I think the intersection you referenced is probably a good example as to sort of systemically what doesn't work. The question is ultimately who's in charge of addressing that problem and one of the things that's a challenge in the city is that everybody's in charge, so nobody's in charge. So if, if ultimately there was a clear accountability of whose responsibility is to reduce that particular liability and that liability would come out of their budget, then suddenly it would again go up to the top of the pile of things to be concerned about. And as part of, we discussed a three-year strategy for the, to address the deficit, it's also about addressing some of the systemic flaws in how we manage and this is an area of opportunity that we could sort of adopt a different business model in so that there is a more direct accountability between these kinds of liabilities and, and ultimately other priorities that departments may budget in.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santana. Mr. Smith is our next speaker?
No, me. I'm Smith. At least for a few weeks. I just had one question, some information brought to my attention by my staff dealing with a $500,000 cut relating to security at this convention center, so I asked the convention center to come forward and see, I understand the argument is that there's been an increase of need there, but that the dollar mouse don't drive with what you say, and so I'd like to hear their concern and ask if we could maybe continue to watch this, report back on this, see if there's a way to resolve this issue, from the point of view of the convention center, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Philip Hill, Assistant Mid-General Manager, Chief Operations Officer, Convention Center. General Services Department throughout Office of Public Safety provides for security and safety services at the convention center. Not getting into budget specifics, but they are, from my understanding, within the allocation for the year, but trending upward and project maybe half a million dollar potential overrun if I understand correctly. The convention center does not necessarily agree with the projection and recommends a different way to proceed. And the way to proceed, we believe, is let's not throw more money at it, let's look at fixing the situation, the problem, and let's stay within budget to the extent that we can, we believe we can mitigate that pretty greatly. So our recommendation is let's alter our deployment levels, working with GSD, and let's return back here fiscal year end and, and give a report on how we're doing and recommendations for next steps. But initial changes will be happening basically as soon as I can get back to the convention center, we will begin mitigating immediately.
Do you, in the final quarter of this year, do you have any big conventions that would require, or big events that would require a lot more policing or have that passed as with the?
Most of that has passed, Electronic Entertainment Expo will be in the June timeframe, but I believe we can mitigate quite well and working with GSD, we can do that in a way which really does not result in a reduction of public safety, it's just a smarter way to deploy. You've kind of seen how we've done that with the convention center globally in our business, we have adapted to a business model we run as a business. We're going to do the same thing when it comes to security services, working in partnership with our GSD partner.
And do you decide how the deployment is or do they decide?
We are the primary decider of deployment, but we consult with them, so we are.
So you basically order their services and you're saying you think you can reduce that order to match the budget impact, identify the $500,000?
We know that we can drastically reduce the, the cost of services and maintain safety and security, but we will still consult with GSD as they are subject matter experts.
Okay. Ms. Sierra?
The reason we establish that number is because last year, GSD had to absorb in their budget a similar number and, and it resulted in an impact, disproportionate impact on that department. And so we're, this number was established looking at the pattern of spending, knowing that it's headed in the same direction, like was indicated, most of the big events have already happened and so the opportunity for savings is a little bit more limited. We'll certainly work with the department, we don't recommend making a change in the FSR, but perhaps making a final adjustment at the end when we close out, there'll be one more FSR before the closing out of the year and at that point, if in fact the department finds a way of reducing that.
I would think, speaking as a general manager type thought process, I would say to you as the general manager, it's much easier for you to take it than for me to ever get it back. So if they don't use that money, you're going to take it anyway at the end of the year. So their concern would be, don't take it until you need it, is there a way we can continuously calibrate this as we go along?
Right.
Rather than taking it upfront?
And the same is true for GSD, I mean, GSD was short last year and they're wanting to make sure that they're, they're struggling as well and they're, they're getting reimbursed, the idea is that they'll be fully reimbursed, so I think somewhere in between we'll, we'll be able to figure it out.
With regards to the convention center, with regards to the convention center source of funds for GSD, whatever GSD doesn't spend, reverts back to the convention center budget. The concern is that, the reason why we included the recommendation is because we weren't seeing an adjustment in service levels and didn't, we're concerned that GSD was going to be put in the same position that they were last year.
I think that our concern overall is to make sure that whatever services are provided by GSD, that they're paid for by the convention center. And the convention center has $1.5 million in additional revenue that we've recognized and we feel that part of that can be used for services that are justified, we can't leave the convention center without security services.
Right. I don't think that's what they're saying, they're saying they can fix that problem, you're saying let's take the money, I'm saying maybe it'd be wiser to say let's put it in, keep it in their budget, but reserve it in their budget and then draw it down as necessary rather than taking it out.
Yes, there's also an additional point, Councilmember, that that money does not exist there, that it's an incorrect assessment that was just placed about additional revenues being there. The convention center is already providing 2.2 million this year to the, to the city, we've increased that by half a million dollars. We've asked that also the $400,000 you've seen in the current fiscal year be separated, the reason is we're about to be put into a cash flow situation, so we do not have that half a million dollars, we recommend let's fix the problem and let's report back.
Councilmember, if we take out, if we take out the recommendation, then the, the amount of, the budget that's available, that's left for GSD would mean that they would provide a minimum level of services. So long as the council's aware of, of what GSD is able to provide and if the two departments are able to work together on an alternative plan, great, but when GSD is asked to provide any additional services, they do need to be compensated for it because otherwise they're making cuts in their own operating budget.
Okay.
Thank you, and Convention Center will be happy to work with GSD to ensure, we're beginning our mitigation measures immediately.
Okay, so then the suggestion would be that you guys will get together, we'll, we'll go ahead and go forward, but we can always come back in the final FSR and make a final adjustment at that point if you can come up with a better plan and, and begin to reduce the cost factor.
Our intent is that we don't want to do the half a million dollar transfer now, we want to, because we're not at budget maximum now, we want to be given the chance to be able to mitigate this and then we readdress at the end fiscal year.
Okay, and so what is the?
We'd like to make an additional recommendation that before GSD is requested to provide additional services, but that appropriation's made upfront.
Yeah, why do you have to do that?
I suppose there would probably have to be a report back once GSD and the convention center work together and establish those levels of services and the funding that is required.
Yeah, but why do you have to take the money upfront if we don't know what that level?
Well, we have an issue with Convention Center spending that money and that money being available to reimburse GSD services at the end of the year, this is what happened last year.
Wait, last year we didn't have this discussion, you just did it at the end of the year because you said, okay, you went over the budget. We didn't have this discussion four months beforehand.
Right.
Now we're having the discussion beforehand and saying, why do you have to take the money based on what happened last year? If they're saying we can change that and fix that, all we got to do is talk about it, then why take the money out now?
Right, so correct, we just want to make sure that there are appropriate adjustments to Convention Center accounts to ensure that that money is available for GSD.
Convention Center has always met any of our appropriation obligations that are there, so the bottom line is, our intent is to be able to not throw money at a problem and do business as normal. It is to fix the system, fix a broken system and do something that works in perpetuity and to report back to this body where the plan that works, that's how we run our business.
So why don't we just cut the appropriation down a bit and, and then you guys come back and we'll finalize it?
Right.
Half, quarter million instead of half million for now?
Yeah, and then work it out.
All right, that'll be my recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Rosendahl?
Certainly appreciate that, Mr. Smith, what you've said there. Can I ask, future services to come up real quick, I know they're in the back of the room, we've got another rainstorm coming in tonight folks and another one after that and then we get a free day on Saturday and another rain on Sunday. And many of us do know that we had 1,500 phone calls the other day when we had that deluge, the last bit of rain that ended up two, three inches. Good news about the rain is, we don't have a rain issue anymore in terms of a water issue, but we certainly have a problem with potholes and, and in my district, we have puddles everywhere and this and that and everything else. Okay, big question is this, how many phone calls did we get of the last rain and have we been able to answer them all? And tie that, because I know I'm taking up a third time here, how do we take street maintenance and street resurfacing and urban forestry and have the flexibility so you can do what you need to do? Please.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Rosendahl, Nacario Salzada, interim Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Since Saturday morning, we have received approximately 2,100 calls.
2,100 calls.
2,100 calls, of which 1,800 pertain to tree, are related to tree, fallen trees, fallen limbs, et cetera, et cetera.
I know I had them in Breton, the Palisades, in West LA, Mar Vista and?
And approximately 300 are related to street conditions. Now, the second part of your question, obviously to us in the Bureau of Street Services, emergency response supersedes anything else.
Correct.
We have to provide, we have to provide our residents with a safe and passable road.
Right.
So what we're doing right now is, we are borrowing employees from the different, from the different divisions within the Bureau of Street Services to put together an emergency response team. In doing this, obviously, we're satisfying the needs of the residents in terms of allowing them to access their houses and doing all those things, but on the other hand, we're getting behind on our other, on our other funded programs such as resurfacing, slurry, et cetera.
So how do we, how do we work that in the issue of our tight budget crunch here right now? Obviously, I've heard in, in Budget and Finance that if we let you keep all your money from the gas money, we might have to take across the board another furlough day, how do we work this out so we don't have to do that and yet get our work done?
Well, most of your offices express a lot of concerns in terms of how can we improve the delivery of, of the core services? And one of the solutions that we provided, one of the options that we provided to council, of course, through Public Works Committee and Personnel Committee, was to utilize some of our surplus to let us work, let us meet our obligation, our furlough obligation to, so we could work, let us pay for the obligation that we have right now in terms of the furloughs so we can work, so we could work those days that we're scheduled to work those furloughs. That's what we were proposing, let us meet, let us offset our furlough obligation by paying the 2.5 million dollars that at that time were required in order for us to work during our furloughs.
Can we get a response back, please, on that, Mr. Santana?
Well, on the, you know, again, it's, it's a similar conversation as the one that we're having around taking the 911 operators off of furloughs and, you know, the, our ability to present solutions that resulted in no additional layoffs or furloughs came out of going through every single account. The only thing that's left really is, you know, a handful of items. If our goal is to maintain the reserve fund at 191, then the only things really we have left is the special events fee subsidy, which is about 1.2, we need to confirm those numbers. There's about $250,000 left in the fire department special training fund or the imposition of one additional furlough day for the rest of the city would basically provide enough funding to take care of taking off street services as a whole off of, of furloughs. And so the options are unfortunately very limited at this time if our intention is to maintain a healthy reserve fund and to leave the pie chart of all the solutions intact.
Sierra, respond to that. Well, again, just let me emphasize again that we fully, in the Bureau of Street Services, we fully understand the need to balance the budget. I mean, we are basically proposing an opportunity of utilizing this funding that is available right now or surplus to provide the much needed core services that the residents are expecting at this point as a result of the emergencies that we faced this week and the ones that we're anticipating by the end of this weekend.
How do we respond to what Mr. Santana just said as the other options that don't seem to be real other than the furlough day?
The options presented by Mr. Santana, I think they, they're, they have to be decided by, by this body, I mean, these are policy decisions and obviously it's a matter of balancing what is important, those reserve accounts or providing services at this point to our residents directly.
It's important to point out that we did recommend $600,000 to take all of streets resurfacing individuals off of furloughs and so that is part of the recommendation we made before the Personnel Committee and will be coming to your, to your body.
Can we use some flexibility with personnel like for tree trimming and moving them around? Can that be done?
Well, again, if we are, if we are only exempting employees from the resurfacing division, that creates what we call an operational inefficiency. The Bureau of Street Services is very unique because we don't have employees who do only or perform only one duty. Our employees perform duties across several divisions, so if I, if I was to use only or exempt only employees within the resurfacing division, I'm going to face a big, big, big dilemma. Let me give you an example. I'm going to say roughly 60% of our employees are acting, I mean, in, in a capacity above their normal job classification, so I do have a lot of employees assigned to the resurfacing division, let's say a maintenance or construction worker that is running a sweeper, and this sweeper doesn't belong to resurfacing, it belongs to maintenance. Now, if I was to exempt only my resurfacing employees, I'm going to have to bring that guy out of the sweeper, put him in resurfacing and now I don't have anybody to run the sweeper. That's the kind of efficiencies that we run within the Bureau. I mean, it isn't, it would be a, a task of monumental proportions to try to put everybody back again where they belong and that would create a lot of inefficiencies in terms of the delivery of services.
We understand the challenges that are, that the street services has, the reality is every department has, has managed to figure out a way to segregate their workforce based on those that are 100% special funded and those are general funded and the Bureau of Engineering is the best example of that. And so furloughs are not being applied consistently across the board because there are certain workers that, that are specifically assigned to tasks related to special funds only. From my office to virtually every other department, whether it's a blended funding source, departments have had to figure out a way to segregate portions of their workforce based on a funding source so that furloughs aren't applied across the board. They, the, you know, streets, resurfacing can be taken off of furloughs because all of that work is fully paid, can be. work is fully paid, can be fully paid for out of the gas tax. But street trimming or street sweeping, it's reliant on the general fund. The small portion that we get compared to the larger budget, and so there would have to be a different way of organizing.
Okay, just two quick questions. First of all, Public Works, we have a board, we pay these people good money. Why aren't they here advocating for you, to begin with? I mean, shouldn't they be advocating for you?
I cannot answer that question, Councilmember. I don't know if they're here.
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, we've got a big group that sit around in a very serious way. I'd like them to defend you or to support you or not. That's question, comment one. Comment two is, I know the reserve fund is a serious thing for us, and Mr. LeBonde was talking about over there in Japan. Well, you know, a lot of rains all of a sudden create issues, and there's a sense of urgency in people's minds of fixing that issue. Is there some way, some flexibility, say, God forbid, this storm this next day is another couple of inches and causes some other issues, that mudslides or this or that or the other, or another tree goes over, you know, a street and causes a traffic accident, something like that? I'm just trying to balance out, it's not a policy decision, it's an emergency notion about what the job is that he does there that affects all of our residents. I'm just curious. Can we get some of that?
Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you. Would you wrap it up? Because there's some minutes over.
I'd just like a response.
Yeah, I'm going to let them answer.
Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Please answer.
Yes, I think there's another way to approach this, a possible solution. Instead of just determining that certain division is going to get, is going to be exempted, maybe we should talk about classifications. I mean, instead of just saying resurfacing, let's talk about classifications. Maybe the classifications will be a better fit because this will allow me to still move people around between divisions. I think that's a better, better and more feasible option if it's considered by this council.
Mr. Santana, you want to answer?
Well, I'll use my office as an example, okay? Much of the work that's produced is done through administrative or management analysts, and they're classification that cut across all sectors. Some of them, a very small handful of them, work exclusively on proprietaries and special funds, okay? Those handful of individuals are exempt from furloughs because their salaries are 100% paid for. If I were to take classifications only of that same category, then it would cut across the entire department and even where the majority are actually paid for out of the general fund. So classifications is not necessarily the best way. If there was going to be an exemption, it would should be around particular functions that reflect your particular priorities.
If I could add, John Chavez with the CAO's office. We do have another option, which would be not only to exempt from furloughs, resurfacing, and pothole repair, but potentially street tree, which of course happened, you know, on Monday, there was a lot of trees that went down. So there is, there is a cost that we've associated with that, but as Miguel mentioned, we are just looking at those divisions and those people in those particular divisions when we talk about the cost, and we're not considering just exempting classifications across the board.
Well, if we're able to include the maintenance and the urban forestry division, we would be more than happy to exempt those employees as well. I mean, just confining this to the resurfacing division, it creates a very, very tough administrative, and certainly we can manage and assign staff, but once again, is resurfacing the only core service that our residents are interested in right now? I think urban forestry is very critical right now. I think people want their trees in front of their houses to be removed as soon as possible. I mean, I don't think they care too much about paving right now as much as getting that tree out of their driveway. So again, it is a policy decision. What else can be included? Maybe maintenance, maybe urban forestry, maybe resurfacing. You know your residents and your constituents better than us.
All right. Thank you. Mr. LeBonde is our next speaker.
Thank you very much. If you could write this down, Mr. Santana. Senior lead, whether it's the planner, officer, public works official for the area. It's very important, if you talked about core business out of this discussion, I wanted to say senior lead because that's the contact to community. And as Ms. Hahn spoke earlier about neighborhood councils, at the same time, there's a contact, it must be their senior lead planner, senior lead officer, senior lead public works representative or whatever it is, just that deal too. For Street Services, I just want to ask for, and thank you for your service as Street Services, it is about public safety and public works. On the issue of classifications, there's something like 1,500 job classifications, is that right? In the city, do we know that? Does anybody know that number? It's...
I have no idea.
Someone knows, Maggie Whalen knows the number.
Yeah, I don't.
So, but we should know the number, Mr. CAO, because I think that's something if we're talking to people about trying to streamline operations, classifications sometimes make it easier for managers to be able to be effective in getting the jobs done, but that's something that is so key on that issue there. I will continue my remarks at a later date, but I just wanted to say senior lead and whatever it is, if you're going to really look at core services and Street Services is core, public safety is core, have that contact so the community could, because often when we lose that, we also lose the connection to the community, which is so important. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, staff.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. Mr. Parks to close?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just mention one thing. I think the CAO and others have been pretty good in the sense of giving you about $650,000, but I think you're going to have to figure out how to spread that out and use it. And so we can't give you money across the board, across the exemptions, so we're trying to give what I think came to us as what was most important, was streets and potholes. So if you could work that out, I think it would be beneficial. One thing, colleagues, in closing, let me ask Antoinette to come up for a minute. I just don't want you to lose sight of all the good work you've done. There's a document that we passed out to everyone about collections of taxes and fees in the city, and I'd just like her to come in and tell you what success that you've had over the last several years and hope that you get a sense of where we are as relates to the dollars. And also, I think if you kind of walk us through this report quickly and tell us what those headings mean, and colleagues, 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 please look at this report, but this is important as to your concern about collecting the fees and what success we've had as of June 30th. So, Antoinette?
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Parks, for allowing me an opportunity to speak. The Office of Finance, we've been in existence for about 10 years, and one of the things that I think is very important to note, that since our office has been in operations and in particular, business taxes, which is one of our higher yielding items, we have collected almost a billion dollars in taxes that otherwise would not have been collected. It's due to our tax compliance programs that we have in place. It's also due to the delinquent collections that we have through our citywide collections unit that used to be in the city attorney's office. We have implemented a number of collection programs, the top debtor program, the parking revocation program. And if you look at parking taxes, particularly the budgeted amount that was budgeted for last year in a recession period, that tax was not reduced. If you look, we actually met the budget revenue target. If you look at parking taxes for this fiscal year, the CAO is not recommending a reduction there because we're going to meet the revenue target, and a lot of it's because of the programs that we have implemented over time. We also have the tax amnesty program that Councilmember Parks spoke about, where we doubled the amount of taxes that we have collected. So we have a number of programs in place. We stepped up our audits of taxpayers. We are vigorously enforcing the tax code. And we also have on the citywide side, a number of changes that we have made. We released our citywide guidelines, and they're very specific about what departments are supposed to do. When the city attorney's office speaks about the city attorney letter, if you go to the citywide guidelines, that is a requirement of departments. They are supposed to be with their second notice using the city attorney's letterhead. Not all departments are doing that. If departments are doing that, then there will definitely be an increase in collections. It doesn't need to be referred to the city attorney's office for that purpose because that is quite costly. A best practice is that departments should be using the city attorney's letterhead as part of their collection effort, and that's part of the citywide guidelines. It's one of the items that the Corps has recommended and asked for a report back on. I think they feel very strongly about that too, and I think it's a best practice. A couple of things I do want to report on is that there's this discussion about this half a billion dollars in debt. The document before you is a page from the City Comptroller's CAFR, the Financial Audit Statements that were audited by outside CPAs. If you look at this report, look at the uncollectible, allowance for uncollectible. That is the area that has constantly been brought up about uncollected debt. This is projected uncollected debt, and of course, we can't collect 100% of everything that's billed because businesses go out of business, you know, people are unable to pay their bills, and in some cases, departments are not writing off their uncollectible debt. Or in cases of the fire department, I am very certain that there are probably in the uncollectible column amounts that really should not have been shown as an uncollectible debt because it's because of adjustments with insurance companies and the like. But the point I want to make here is that if you look at the allowance for uncollectible, you have taxes receivable, you have accounts receivable. For allowance for uncollectible for taxes is $47.3 million. Looking at the accounts, the taxes that are managed by the Office of Finance, our collection rate is 94%, and I'll repeat that, 94%. We have done a number of, taken a number of steps to improve collections, and I think that we've made great gains here, and to transfer that back to the city attorney's office, particularly the delinquent debt, really would be going backwards, and it's not best practice. If you look at the accounts receivable, more, there's $465 million that's considered uncollectible, and again, it's in the two departments that we've talked about, the fire relative ambulance billings and DOT parking fines. The fire department started referring delinquent accounts to the second, to the collection agencies, I believe in February of 2010, and we have seen improvements in their collections, but there's more work that needs to be done there. The average billing is probably between $300 and $400. That's a delinquent billing. I don't think you want the city attorney's office having city attorneys go after $300, $400 receivables. What happens right now is that those delinquent billings are not, are referred to the collection agencies. We have primary and secondary collection agencies. They're handling that collection and they are recovering their own fee. The DOT, which represents about $184 million of that $465 million, DOT is in the process of releasing an RFP because right now they use an outside vendor to collect on their debt. And what they have said, that they have an 85% collection rate. And so we anticipate when DOT goes forward with their new RFP, and we have mandated that the new, whoever gets the contract, that they have to follow the citywide guidelines, which means that they need to refer the accounts to the primary and secondary collection agencies in addition to all the other requirements of the citywide guidelines. So my point, sir, and other members of council, is that I think it's very misleading for the city attorney's office to say that the debt should be referred back to them. When the debt was in their office, they were collecting $700, $800 a year. It's around $30 million a year now, and it's been that way for the past three years or so. That's a 380-some-odd percent improvement. And as I've said, there's more work that can be done, and we have been working very cooperatively with the city attorney's office because we want to make sure that they do a great job in addition to the work that's been done by my department and others.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'd ask you to move item six as reported from the budget and finance report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Park. And with that, thank you very much, Mr. Santana, and to all the staff people who reported today for bringing forth.
We have one amendment that's circulated.
Madam President, for clarification, there is amended motion 6A, motion, Garcia Parks.
All right. So we'll be voting on the entire package as amended. Friendly amendment, 6A. So, Mr., does everybody have a copy of 6A?
No.
Oh, it's a friendly amendment. Okay, great. Let's open the roll then, as amended. You don't have it, Mr. Corcoran needs a copy. Let's give...
It was distributed.
Believe it was distributed?
Yes.
Yes, it's been quite a while ago. Mr. Garcia, why don't you speak into the mic so people can hear you?
Okay. It's mine. Don't panic. It's mine. It adds $150,000 to specific line item to work on collections and revenue, the stuff people were talking about, to make sure that we have the money in place for the staffing up to allow that to happen.
All right. Let's open the roll on this item. 6A, yes. Friendly amendment, 6A. So this item we're voting on is as amended by 6A, friendly amendment. Mr. Zine?
Regarding this, that we're going to vote on, that we move 1.8 million in the, let me get it.
Number two.
Number two, authorize the control to transfer 1.842616 from Fund 550-12 Consumer Protection Trust Fund Account A304 Consumer Protection Penalty to Fund 100/12 City Attorney, 1010 Salary General for Eligible Salary Expenses. So asking for, and this is from the city attorney's office, to transfer 1.8 from the Fund 550/12 Consumer Protection Trust Fund to Consumer Protection Penalty Fund, City Attorney Salary General for Eligible Salary Expenses. Do you agree with this one?
Yes.
Okay, just as part of this particular package.
Do you know what it is?
Yes.
Hold on just a second. Why, Mr. Zine, are you making a motion or what are you trying to do?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm making a motion on behalf of the city attorney for this...
But can we please vote on that separate from the item? I don't think we need to roll that into this. It just complicates things.
This is the verbal...
I'd like to vote on 6A first, and then, let's just...
Can we get copies of this?
Open the roll on 6A, close the roll, tabulate the vote. 12 eyes. All right. Now, Mr. Zine, you have an item up.
Can we get copies of this from the city attorney's office to distribute to the council members?
Okay, Mr. Zine, what is it?
This is the Consumer Protection Trust Fund, and they're looking to transfer this money within their Consumer Protection Trust Fund, money within the city attorney's office. And if we can get copies, or Mr....
Mr. Santana, Mr. Zine is making a proposal here, or a motion, on behalf of the office of the city attorney, and since we don't have any...
I think we need copies for everyone.
First, we need a second, but I, we're going to also need some background, some explanation.
We'll pass it out if we can...
I believe it was taken out in budget and finance. Do we have a second on Mr. Zine's motion? Do you want to say it again, Mr. Zine?
We're going to move $1,008,000 in the Consumer Protection Trust Fund to the city attorney's salary account. It's within their trust fund account with the city attorney's office. Miguel, can you explain the detail on it?
Okay, Mr. Santana?
Ben Sahel, the CAO. If you recall, part of the solutions that have been taking place up to this point have been taking place at the start of the fiscal year, at the first FSR and the operational plan. One of those solutions that the city attorney identified and was approved in concept by this body was to use consumer protection funds for reimbursements of work that the city attorney has done, amounted to consumer protection cases. So what this motion would do is actually move those funds from the Consumer Protection Trust Fund to the salary accounts for that purpose. So in essence, it's effectuating a transfer of funds that was approved in concept by this body several months ago.
I was going to say, it's basically, it's approved in concept as part of the operational plan. This is a portion of the 4.2 million that was approved as part of that plan.
How much is in that fund?
I believe right now there's roughly about 2.8. $1 million needs to go for, actually for the budget purposes, and there is this 1.8 that needs to be transferred now for, actually for 1010 salary account, so.
Mr. Zine, I have a suggestion. If we could send this back to committee, if you are amendable, we do not have a second yet. yet, and...
I just want to assure that the city attorney has the resources to do the job that they need.
No, I understand, but we don't have any, we don't have any, excuse me, we don't have any fiscal impact analysis. I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it was taken out in committee, and...
It was taken out for me?
Mr. Santana can confirm.
I was told it was not taken out. It was... Mr. Parks, have you seen this in your committee?
It didn't come in, it came in today. It didn't come in committee, and I would suggest we send the committee to evaluate it.
All right.
Thank you.
I thought it was already reviewed. Okay.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Send to committee.
And thank you very much, Mr. Zine, for being amenable to that. Mr. Kerkorian, press his button, and then I'll...
I see my point.
Okay, yeah, send it back to committee. Okay, great. Mr. Labange?
I was going to give Mr. Zine a second if that would help.
Well, now you can second it, and it will go back to committee.
You can second?
It will go to committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and...
So we open the roll on number six as amended.
We already... Now we have to open the roll on six as amended, Mr. Clerk. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, thank you very much, and again, thank you, Mr. Zine. What's our next item?
Madam President, that brings us to item number 15.
All right. That'll be closed session. So if we can have the admonition from the city attorney?
Counsel is going into closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.9A on the Sandra Carter versus City of Los Angeles matter.
All right, if we could clear the chamber, we're going in closed session. Officers will help us clear the chamber. Once we are secure, closed session can begin. And members, just to let you know, that in just a few minutes, we will be at Bearquam. Two of our members are excused to leave at 1:30. Two of our members are excused to leave at 1:30. Two of our members are excused to leave at 1:30.
Staff for animal shelters.
To hire more firefighters and police officers.
To take care of seniors in our parks.
And to support all the animals in our zoo.
Make sure you shop L.A. and buy it in L.A. That way, you can put those sales tax dollars to work to benefit all of us.
In about two hours, we'll have it all finished. The grass will be in, and then you'll be able to come out here and enjoy yourself and really have a lot of fun in your garden.
It looks beautiful.
Good. Julie, I think you did a great job of selecting this fountain, you and Kevin, and the nice thing about it is it really fits well to the scale of the garden, but also it's a very low-water-using fountain, very efficient as well. Also, in the back, you've noticed that we planted some corral bells that kind of fill in some of the large areas, and these are a very beautiful plant, again, with the sea anothus, all California natives. It really added a tremendous amount of color. It's going to make this outdoor living space very spectacular. As these plants develop their flowers in the spring, and with the contrast with the sea anothus and the vines that we have espaliered are spread out over this cedar fence, all this contrast is really going to make this backyard pop, and it's going to be really exciting to come back out here and entertain and just have a wonderful time enjoying this beautiful outdoor room, which is a California-friendly landscape. This is our final phase, and in about two hours from now, you'll see all of this grass, this warm-season grass, which we recommend in the California-friendly landscape, installed under my feet.
It's now been two weeks since Kevin and Julie began their garden makeover. The couple wanted their outdoor space to become a water-wise garden that was neat and easy to maintain, provided more room for the children to play, and gave them more room for entertaining. Did they get what they wanted? Let's have a look.
Two weeks ago, the front of Kevin and Julie's house used to look like this. Today, the front yard is a peaceful, luscious showcase of California's most water-efficient plants, from drought-resistant grass...
All right, let me know when we're back. All right, thank you very much, members. We are back in open session now. Mr. Clerk, what is our next order of business?
Madam President, counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Motions are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Counsel member Zine requests to leave at 11:30 on April 6th due to city business, that meets council policy.
Great, without objection.
Counsel member Cardenas requests to leave at 12:15 on March 30th due to city business, that meets council policy.
Again, without objection.
Counsel member Rosenboll requests to leave 11:30 on April 15th due to city business, that meets council policy.
That's fine, without objection.
Counsel member Weezer requests to be excused on June 28th and 29th, as well as July 1 and 5th due to personal business, that meets council policy.
All right, thanks, that's without objection. What's our next order of business?
The desk is clear.
All right. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Rosenboll, do you have an announcement?
No, Liz Taylor.
Okay. All right, why don't we all rise for adjourning motions, please? I think a number of the members wanted to say a few words about Elizabeth Taylor, so why don't we take that first? Mr. Labange?
Liz Taylor, just a great actress, but as a person, her fight through life in most recent years, in joining in the awareness of AIDS, HIV, and the fight to cure people, all that she has done has truly led her to get the Gene Hutchinson Award for Humanitarianism from her peers. She truly was a very special person as an actress, as a young actress. In all her ways, she was remarkable and loved by many, and I know we're all going to join and say words. Mr. Rosenboll, I know you...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Labange. This will be in all members' resolutions, so, Mr. Rosenboll, Ms. Hahn, I think you wanted to say a few words, and then we'll go around the circle again.
You know, when John Warner was running for the United States Senate, Liz Taylor was married to him, and Liz reached out to me because I was running the campaign for Henry Howell, who was running for governor that year before in the state of Virginia. And so we spent some time together, and we talked about what role she would play for her husband in that contest. Of course, he won, and she did give him a lot of support and help make it, but my real relationship with her is from the gay community over the years. You know, when AIDS first came out, everybody ran to the hills, I lost my lover, all kinds of people died, it was a Holocaust that we will never forget, those of us who lived from '80 to the mid-'90s when all of the deaths started to happen. When Rock Hudson died, it was a breakthrough really for us because all of a sudden, somebody who was famous and well-known and loved had passed on, and she jumped in there and became one of our leading champions and stayed focused on that even to the days as she was in a wheelchair toward the end of her life. She was fighting not just for HIV, but for gay rights. She was a terrific lady, she was a very warm, personable person who put herself out on the line, and she passed away this morning. May she rest in peace.
All right, Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, well, thanks. You know, again, she was just such a, one of the, really from the old, you know, old-school Hollywood glamour royalty with those violet eyes. She had such a, her acting career, her movie career really stood on its own. She received two Academy Awards for her performances, but, you know, she really changed, I think, America's and possibly the world's view of the HIV/AIDS epidemic in this, you know, country, in this world. And Bill, you were talking about Rock Hudson, and this morning, when all the tributes were being aired on the morning shows, they were remembering that when Rock Hudson was first diagnosed with this disease, then we knew nothing about it, people were afraid of people with AIDS, they didn't want to touch people with AIDS, and Elizabeth Taylor took Rock Hudson's hand and held his hand in front of the world, and they were saying how that completely changed people's perception of what you could and couldn't do, and it really moved us forward to treating people with AIDS with dignity and respect, and she truly was a champion and a voice for so many of the voiceless. A great actress, I had an aunt who called her "La Liz" because she was just so gorgeous and so dramatic in her public career and in her private life. We will miss her.
Members, just to let you know that we're going to have to adjourn for lack of a quorum right now. So...
Wasn't it?
Appreciate your words, and then we can take action on them tomorrow if other people would like to, Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, if other people would like to read their adjourning motions into the record, otherwise, we can do them on Friday. Okay? So, Ms. ...